I'm not a musician. I'm not a musician, but my wife is. I'm a roadie.
That's nice. Good.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Marshall, let's see. Amherst Media is with us. You have a quorum of the board. The attendees are popping on in here. I see six thirty-three by my computer. I think you're good to go.
Hey. Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome.
Welcome to the Amherst Planning Board Meeting of June fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. My name is Doug Marshall, and as the Chair of the Amherst Planning Board, I am calling this meeting to order at six thirty-three P. M. This meeting is being recorded and is available live stream via Amherst Media. Minutes are being taken. Pursuant to chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-one and extended by chapter two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three, this planning board meeting, including public hearings, will be conducted via remote, excuse me, remote means using the Zoom platform. The Zoom meeting link is accessible on the meeting agenda posted on the town website's calendar listing for this meeting, or go to the planning board webpage and click on the most recent agenda where the Zoom link is listed at the top of the page. No in-person attendance of this public is permitted. However, every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the meeting in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so for reasons of economic hardship or despite best efforts, we will post an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's website. Board members, I will take a roll call. When I call your name, unmute yourself, answer affirmatively, and return to mute. Bruce Colton.
I am here.
Fred Hartwell.
I am here.
Jesse Major.
I'm here.
Hi, Doug Marshall, I'm present. Janet McGowan.
Here.
Uh, Johanna Newman is absent, at least thus far. And Karen Winter.
Here.
Thank you all, especially those of you who are zooming in from a long distance away and in different time zones. Board members, if technical issues arise, we may need to pause to fix the problem and then continue the meeting. If the discussion needs to pause, it will be noted in the minutes. Please use the raise hand function to ask a question or make a comment. I will see your request and call on you to speak. After speaking, remember to remute yourself. To the general public, the general public comment item on the agenda is reserved for public comment regarding items not listed specifically later on tonight's agenda. Please be aware, the board will not respond to comments during general public comment period. Public comment may also be heard at other times during the meeting when deemed appropriate by the planning board chair. Please indicate you wish to make a comment by clicking the raise hand button when public comment is solicited. If you have joined the Zoom meeting using a telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your phone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name and address and put yourself back into mute when finished speaking. Residents can express their views for up to three minutes or at the discretion of the chair. If a speaker does not comply with these guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation may be disconnected from the meeting. Okay, so first item on our agenda and is uh minutes. And the time is six thirty-six. We have two sets of minutes that were distributed with our packet. Uh, the first set from April third and the second set from April tenth of this year. First, regarding the April third minutes, does anybody have any comments on the April third minutes? I do not see any hands from anyone on the board. In that case, is there anyone who would like to make a motion to accept the minutes as drafted? Bruce.
I propose acceptance of minutes as drafted, April third.
Thank you. Jesse.
A second.
Thank you for seconding. Any further comments or discussion by the board? All right, we'll go right into that. Uh, roll call vote for for the April third minutes. Bruce.
I approve.
Uh, Fred.
I approve.
Jesse.
Hi.
Janet.
Hi.
Uh, Karen.
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. That's six in favor and one absence. All right, we'll move right on to the April tenth minutes. Any comments from board members? No comments from board members. Would anyone like to um move that we approve those minutes? Just Jesse.
Sorry, it will be approved the April tenth, tenth minutes.
As drafted. Okay, thank you. And Bruce?
I second the motion.
All right, thank you all. Anybody want to make any comments before we go through the roll call vote on that? All right. Starting at the opposite end of the of the last names of your of the alphabet, Karen.
I approve.
And Janet.
Hi.
Uh, I'm an I as well. Jesse.
Hi.
Fred.
I approve.
And Bruce.
Hi.
All right, another vote with six in favor and one absence. All right, the time now is six thirty-nine, at least on my cap on my computer. Uh, we will go into the second item on the agenda, which is public comment. And at this time, I typically read the names of the public that I can see in attendance. So I see Diana Deng, Jeff LeBeau, Karen Letterer, Leila Kio, Mara Keen, Michael Prignano, Sue Kelly and Su Jatta or Su Hatta. Um, I apologized to anybody whose name I mispronounced. All right, uh, members of the public, do any of you want to make a comment regarding items that do not appear later in in this evening's agenda? All right, Pam, I'm seeing Sue Kelly raise her hand. Sue, welcome. If you'd give us your name and your street address here in Amherst, then you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Sue Kelly. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
I live at one forty-two Columbia Drive and the back of my property of but or is had a corner to fifty-one Hunter's Hill Circle.
Okay, so we are going to have that later on the agenda.
So help me understand when that will be.
Um, that will probably be the next item on our agenda, in fact, after we finish public comment.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, are there any other members of the public who would like to make a comment about something not appearing later on the agenda tonight?
Not appearing later.
Yes, and fifty-one Hunter's Hill Circle will appear later in the agenda. Okay, I am not seeing any hands from any other members of the public. So um, I guess we will go on without any public comment tonight. Uh, the time now is six forty-one, and we'll go to the third item on the agenda. A site plan review SPR two thousand and twenty-four dash zero eight. Uh, the applicant is C I L Realty of Massachusetts, Inc. The address of the property is fifty-one Hunter's Hill Circle. Request site plan review approval under section three point three three six point one of the zoning bylaw for philanthropic or charitable medical or residential facility for a change of use and site alterations, including two ADA ramps, rear deck, impervious walkway, approximately a hundred and fifty feet of vinyl privacy fence and repaved driveway. Uh, parcel sixteen D dash two zero nine in the R N zoning district. Are there any uh members of the of the board who have uh any disclosures that they should make? All right, I'm not seeing any uh members having any disclosures. So we'll go ahead and welcome the applicant. Pam, if you could bring over. Do you know who it is?
I I'm not sure who's attending tonight on behalf of this, so if they could raise their hand, then I can move them over into the panelist.
All right, so Michael Prignano.
And Jeff LeBeau.
And Diana Deng. They both raised their hands.
Jeff LeBeau has not raised his hand.
Maybe he's not presenting.
All right. I see Nate Malloy just arrived, so hello, mate Nate. All right, Michael uh and Diana, welcome to our meeting this evening. Uh, we'd like you to go ahead and make your presentation on what you're asking of the board.
I'm going to let Diana start from C I L Realty.
Um, so from my understanding, uh, so we have a house that we are, you know, site planned for, and in front of the board is just approval for us to put in ramps, rear deck, walkway, and fence and a driveway. I don't think there are more details than that. Um, so.
Well, I I I believe we're also being asked to approve a change of use of the building from a private residence. Isn't that right?
Um, I think that's on the docket. So, um.
Um, uh, Diana, since you seem a little not so certain about this, uh, Chris Brestrip, would you mind uh maybe framing the conversation tonight?
Yes, this is a um, an application that's being brought under section three point three three six point one of the zoning bylaw, philanthropic or charitable medical or residential facility. Um, so what C I L Realty is, it's it's actually Center for Independent Living. Um, and they um develop and sometimes operate homes for people who um can't really live by themselves, and they might be elderly, disabled, they might be um, you know, people who just have disabilities and can't live on their own and need to live in a group home. So that's what this is, and um they are asking for a site plan review because of the changes that they're making to the site, and those include um, they're adding a little bit of a deck to the front porch um to make a a wooden deck under the overhang of the front porch. Um, they're adding a ramp going, if if somebody could bring up um a drawing, that would be helpful. Maybe Pam, could you bring up the site? Yeah. So they're adding a ramp to get up to that um that deck from the driveway, and that would allow people to enter the front door. Um, there's also going to be a sidewalk uh that goes around to the, I think it's the west side of the house.
So, so Chris, uh, until the drawing shows up, uh, can you clarify for me? Is this use an as-of-right use in that district?
Yes, it is. It's by.
So, so we are not being asked to approve the use of this house as a group home?
Not really. You're being asked to um, well, it's it is a a protected use, so I think it would probably be a good idea if you did state that you approved the change of use, just in case there's an issue, but really what you're being asked to do is to approve the changes to the site.
Okay.
So here you can see that there's a driveway coming up from Hunter Hill Circle. Uh, it's an existing driveway that's not in very good condition, um, and it's got two parking spaces at the end of the driveway. Um, from the driveway, there's a ramp. You can see that going across the front of the building, and that is going to a um newly created uh landing that um will allow people to get, can you move the arrow to the front of the building? Whoever's controlling the, yeah, that's right. Yep. Um, so that ramp leads you up to a wooden um platform that's being created on top of a concrete porch that's already there, and um that will allow people to get into the front door, and the front door is where that little thing that looks like an eye is uh is shown, and that's actually a light. Um, that's, that's right. Uh, over towards the right, that's a light, and that's where the door is, the front door. And there's also a light um where Pam had her uh cursor before, and that's right over the garage door. Um, and the garage is going to be used as a storage shed. Um, and then there's another walk that goes up the west side of the house, and it's labeled an impervious sidewalk. So we don't know whether that's asphalt or concrete, but it's either one. Uh, and that leads to a ramp that goes up to a new deck that's being built at the back of the house, and the new deck um will allow access into a nude door. And that's again where that little thing that looks like an eye is located, but that's really a light. Um, and there's a light on the west side of the house that is right next to where the side, where the walkway will be. So those are the changes that are being proposed by the applicant. Um, the board may also wish to consider whether there need to be some changes made to the driveway to accommodate more than two cars. So unfortunately, we've been kind of busy here in the planning department, and I just sent out a development application report for this project this afternoon. And it does state that um for this type of use, um there should be one parking space for each bedroom. Um, now, whether or not the people who live here would actually have cars or not is um something that you may want to ask about. But the um requirement of the bylaws says that there should be three parking spaces because there are three bedrooms. So you might want to talk to the applicant about um how they came to the number of only two parking spaces. Maybe that's something that you want to get into uh later, but I'd suggest that you all take a quick look at the development application report because there are a couple of things that might need to be uh talked about. There's also a um six-foot-high vinyl, white vinyl fence that's going to go around the northwest corner of the property, and it's shown as a dark line. That's it, Pam. Yep, exactly. So it's going to be on the back property line and on the side property line, and I think the idea there is to give some privacy to the people who are going to live here so they can come out on the deck and have a cup of coffee or, you know, um, read the paper or whatever without being uh exposed to the the uh neighboring houses. Um, there's also a lot of vegetation around the site, so the the two sides of the site and the back of the site have a lot of um heavy vegetation, trees and shrubs and things. Um, what else can I say? Uh, the interior of the house is going to have three bedrooms. It's also going to have an office space, so maybe we want to look at um the interior of the site. And I, that might be the next sheet that Pam has in her. Or plan. Yeah, that's good. That's a good one. So this is showing the exterior of the site and what the uh what the ramps will look like and what the deck at the back door will look like, and you're showing the back door, and now um as you scroll down, it shows the front door and the ramp up to the front door. Um, so that gives you a good indication of what it's going to look like, and then the next drawing down is a floor plan of the of the it's only a one-story building, so it's the first floor, but it's the only floor. Um, you can see that there are three bedrooms. Um, I'm not sure why they're labeled the way they are, but there are going to be two bedrooms on the east side of the prop of the house. One is labeled bedroom four, and if you scroll down, the other one is labeled bedroom three, so those two bedrooms exist. Um, and there's a bathroom in between them. And then um there's living space in the middle, dining, kitchen, and living s- living room. And then on the west side of the house is going to be new bedroom number two. And if you go uh down on this page, you'll see that there's a shed that's um previously a garage. Now it's going to be a shed. Um, go back up.
Yep, okay.
And there's going to be an office um in the northwest corner of the property right there, and it looks like the office might be accessed through. I'm not sure how the office is accessed, but that may be something that you want to ask because I don't see a door leading into it. Um, but that's kind of what I know about this project, and um there was a site visit, and Janet McGowan and um Bruce went on the site visit with me, and they may have some things that they want to tell you about the site.
Yeah, okay, thanks for.
And Johanna.
Thanks for giving us the overview, uh, Chris. So before we go to the site visit report, uh, Diana or Michael, do you want to say anything more about to introduce this to us?
I can. I'm the contractor from Hillside Builders. So a few things you just noticed. There's a couple of mistakes on this plan. Obviously, there is no bedroom four. There's only three. They forgot to draw in the door that goes into the office from the hallway. Otherwise, everything looks good. So I don't know if you have questions about what it's going to look like, the ramps. Whatever you guys have about a construction question, just ask me and I'll let you know.
All right, thank you. I assume that was was that Michael that spoke?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, now let's go on to the site visit report, and um Janet and Bruce, I gather it was you two. Uh, do either of you want to?
I wanted to share. It's Johanna. I'm here joining by phone. Sorry, I was late.
Oh, hi, Johanna.
Oh, hi, Johanna.
For letting us know that you've arrived.
I got on at six forty-eight for the minute.
All right, thank you. Okay, that um Bruce or Janet, anything about the site visit?
Bruce?
Um, yes, we uh we basically walked around the house. Uh, there was a contractors were there that they were electricians, so we couldn't really get much out of them. Um, but it's pretty much as Chris described, uh, the uh uh, the 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 site is uh it was a family home, I think. There's a, there's a retaining wall a little further down south. Uh, that's the the the, what's not evident from the plan is that the uh there's quite a slope up from the uh circle, the cul-de-sac circle. Uh, that driveway is a, or I would say eight or ten percent slope up. Um, there's a terrace, just a semi-terrace thing uh on the the on the ground landscape as it comes down. It's hasn't been maintained too well. I think it used to be a family, but if there were gardens, they're not there anymore. There's quite a lot of woods around. Uh, woods are not super well-maintained, but you know, it's it's uh they're 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 bush scrub. Um, I I know just, I think, Chris, in the plan, you said the fence was on the property line. I think it's actually on the setback line. And it was a six-fet fence and and uh I've uh I didn't notice that at the time, but the one other thing that I would notice is that the uh that the 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 setback, particularly to the backside, perhaps is rather more thickly wooded. Um, and perhaps uh be uh, so that's why it's on the setback line, but my my sense is that if it was a five-foot fence, it could be on the property line, I think. Uh, am I correct? Um, there's a slightly lower fence would be would be able to be on the property line, and I wonder why. That would be a question momentarily, so I'll stop giving. That's that's all that I uh observe, uh, I think, uh, that we haven't already discussed. Oh, there was um some, just to explain the deck, the, I mean, the entry, the the existing porch is about six inches below the doorway. So in fact, putting that porch on is not only widening the deck, but it also serves the purpose of bringing the the uh entry porch level up to the level of the doorway. There's, there was a door at the far end that went into the garage, but that door is is going away, so um elevating the porch, uh, the entry um veranda or whatever you want to call it in the way they're doing um is a pretty sensible way of providing access to the building accessibly and uh also widening the porch. We we we're we're not sure that it's a ADA or A A B A A B compliant but uh access, but it's also not clear that the regulatory requirement for that. So we 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 regarded it as a functionally accessible house. The entry door, for example, is not three feet wide, but if you're a walker or something like that, that it would make all the sense in the world to have the kind of accessibility that they're proposing.
All right, thanks, Bruce. Janet, anything you want to add?
Yeah, I think Bruce is um talking about the entryway reminds me that we were wondering um who is going to be living in the house, and so you know, there seems to be access that would enable somebody who had, you know, poor balance or needed a walker or wheelchair to get to the backyard deck and to get into the front door, although if you were in a wheelchair, it might be hard to get through the re- the front door, which is a little, you know, kind of more standard. And then you open the door and there's a closet right there, and so the question was, at least for me, was will people with wheelchairs be there using this property? And will they have access into the building? Like, do you have to widen the door? And if they're in wheelchairs, is the driveway slope too steep? And so the question is who's going to be living there because that kind of helps you evaluate whether the changes are suitable for that. Um.
So you don't have anything else about the site visit to report?
Yeah, well, that the front door was narrow and it opens, it's very tight, and then um there was, so that was one question. Um, and then the driveway itself was um just kind of a regular driveway, so if you had to park more than two cars or pull in a van and turn around, it wasn't sufficient.
Okay. All right. Great. Um. All right.
Doug, this is Johanna. It's hard for, it's hard. I'll just say one other thing. So Bruce was right. We walked around the house, and I'll just note that we kind of looked pretty closely at where the deck would be and where the door to the office would be, and yeah, other than kind of the question around the entryway and the driveway, I think it was, oh, there was, there was also kind of a note of the looking at how closely, like where the fence, how how far down towards the cul-de-sac the fence goes. We kind of noted where the trees end and where the existing driveway is and how it relates to where that fence line would be. That's it.
Okay. All right, so um I guess we'll move right on into the questions, and uh Janet brought up a question. Maybe uh Michael or Diana, you can start with telling us about your program and who is likely to live in the house.
Uh, so this is Diana. Uh, I'm at C I L. I'm actually representing, stepping in for my colleague, Melissa McGowan, who is away this week. So in terms of who is living at the house, that's um, that's information that's protected by HIPAA, so I won't be able to share any of their conditions. So I can answer the next question.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so you're not able to, I mean, I would understand not it being able to identify any specific names of people, but um, can you tell us anything about their demographics or their uh why they're in the house as opposed to somewhere else?
Um, the reason they're in the house is the service provider or building the house for has had them assigned to them as clients, and that's really the most information that I have.
Okay. All right, uh, Bruce.
Uh.
You just muted yourself.
How clever of me. I hadn't unmuted before. I mean, uh, for the purposes of our consideration. How clever of me. I hadn't unmuted before. I mean, uh for the purposes of our consideration, I'm going to guess that the uh I hope hopefully, hopefully, that the answer to who will live there is who can get in. I I think that there's a cart and a horse here and I I think that we should be, as a board, be satisfied that the house will provide uh um support and and to uh to the greatest extent possible. Uh people will live there who can get in. And if there's a power wheelchair, it's probably I don't think they're going to widen the door for the power wheelchair. They'll find another place. So my guess is that we don't have to get too concerned about um uh access and so forth.
What I can say, sorry to cut in, what I can say about accessibility is that the house will be built, all the renovations will meet ADA requirements. Um so you can be confident in that it'll meet the building code for for that.
Well, you mean you're going to widen the front door?
Yeah, all the all the necessary doors that need to be widened will be widened to a minimum of thirty-six inches clear, more if necessary. Depending on discussions with our with our client once the project gets underway.
Okay, none of that was evident on the drawings we saw. Um but uh a couple of uh questions that I had was I was just curious about those porch columns. I mean, uh you were moving the columns uh on the two columns supporting the roof across that porch and there's in, there's no indication that they're staying and widening the porch suggests that maybe you intend not to. So you're gonna, so that would mean some fairly major roof structural work. Are you really going that uh you you're putting that much work into it?
I am. We're going to put new posts in our space sitting over the new framing.
Okay. Um the driveway, um well, let me ask my fence question. Uh the reason I'm curious about the location of the fence, uh you're putting a fence on the uh setback line, which basically means that uh are you, are you going to be maintaining the landscape on the uh in the setback around behind the fences there? Uh or is that just going to become a wild terrain that uh might affect adversely the neighbors?
Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, you probably saw by all the vegetation that you'd have to take trees down to get it closer to the property line. Um which is basically the reason why it's going over it is. But yeah, the um the landscapers that will maintain this house will be notified that they have to take care of the whole property, which is going to be beyond that fence also.
Okay.
So that will be part of the management plan?
Yes.
And Chris, I guess we'll need a revised management plan.
What does the management plan say now?
Yeah. And the uh one final question, Doug?
Yep.
Well, one final, but one more. Um the uh the driveway, as we said, is steep, uh and it's uh quite blind down onto uh Hunter Circle. Johanna uh particularly noted that it's probably one of the least heavily trafficked uh streets in town, so I guess we we can consider that, but it 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 seemed backing downhill, particularly if it was a van who was, you know, some of these vans, uh we we all three of us actually have experience of these uh sort of residence, support group residences in our immediate neighborhoods and we we kind of see how the traffic moves around them from time to time as we walk or drive past. So we we imagine that there would be, might be vans coming in and out, and it seemed that uh that we should expect to see a turnaround uh uh at the head of that driveway, which is one of the reasons I think John is interested in the fence, how far the fence extends and whether that really has to be. Because uh I would, the question is therefore would you not expect to have a a level of traffic, vans, visitation, even if not parking from the residents themselves that would uh benefit or even necessitate a small turnaround perhaps where the the red pickup was parked the day we were there on the western side. Um to make it possible for someone to turn at the head of that driveway and then drive straight down rather than backing their vehicle down. Would you not uh think that a turnaround was an important uh part of the site plan?
Yeah, I could look into that before the paver gets anything done there. It it was only requested to replace the existing driveway. They never, again, as a contractor, I'm not telling them what they do, they told me what to do. So they want to replace the existing driveway as it sits, but I will take a look at it and see what we could do to at least make it where maybe you'd be able to turn around. And that fence would go about halfway down the driveway. There's a big, a section where there's no trees looking to the left side of neigh- neighbor. So we were going to bring the fence right down to where the trees start again, so that they would have, the neighbors on the left would also have some privacy from looking at fifty-one's driveway. So it's basically halfway down the driveway where the fence starts.
Ah, okay. Much further than on, further than the drawing show.
Yeah, I don't think the drawing shows it as far down as it actually goes.
So Diana, since you're probably part of the group that's uh instructing Michael, uh what would you be open to including a turnaround on the driveway?
Um I'm taking notes. I will bring it back to my colleague Melissa when she gets back so that she's aware of the request and then I'll have her, she'll she'll talk to the team and I can have her get back to you.
All right, she can communicate with Chris and um I think if we're going to have that kind of conversation, uh we should not plan on approving this tonight. Uh we, you know, we want to just raise some issues for you to think about and then you'll probably need to come back. Okay.
Doug, this is Johanna. Can I, it's it's somewhat related to the turnaround and and I think this is an okay ques- question to ask, but how many vehicles are reasonably expected to be at the house on you know, during its normal operation? So if every resident has a vehicle and the staff has a vehicle, that makes four, you know, that, like, the current driveway wouldn't accommodate that. So the question of the turnaround was a little bit the backing out, but it was also just is there actually enough parking on site if there are, you know, because right now there are two spots at best.
Right. So this property looked like it was near the end of the road. And I guess I'm also, I'm kind of wondering whether there's any expectation, whether the some vehicles might park on the road. Uh Diana, can you speak to the number of vehicles expected and where you thought they would park?
Um so unfortunately, no. Um I'm I'm not familiar in depth with the project, but I've, again, I've taken down the question and I will relay it to Melissa and she'll be able to talk to
Okay.
the writer and be able to provide you with a better answer on that.
All right, yep. So that's another kind of question from the board. Joe, uh Bruce, I I assume you're finished and we'll go on to uh Janet.
So I guess, you know, so we'll just another question. So the, you know, it's just on top of um Johanna and Bruce's question, you know, will peak residents drive? And then um if people are using walkers or wheelchairs, um you know, maybe going for a walk in the neighborhood, which is quite pleasant. Um I just wonder what the ADA requirements with that driveway, because it seemed quite steep. And so I just don't know the answer to that question, but if people are going to be using wheelchairs to go in and out, to walk into the neighborhood and you know, or to move into the neighborhood, I'm wondering if that is ADA compliant, because it's pretty steep. Um and so that, you know, basically questions, you know, we're just wondering who's, how many staff people would be there? Are they driving? There is a bus stop nearby, but I think, you know, we should just need to make sure that the driveway in the facility works for everybody there. Um I have also have, it's not a question for um CIL, but um I wondered if I think I I I may have missed this, but I, the the fire department's transmitter was like, here's all the requirements you need to meet. But no one said, and you've met them. So I wondered if we can get that from the fire department, someone to go out and say, yeah, here are the requirements and they're safe. Because I I had sort of questions about what if you were on the back porch and you had to get out? Is is that going to work? But I think it would work because of the walkway. But I just wanted someone who is a professional in fire to say that this project meets that.
All right, I I know we've had that question come up on other projects where they just listed the requirements and didn't actually comment on the compliance. Uh Chris, is that likely to you know, do they, do they just redo the, do the requirements now and then when the building permit is applied for? That's when they say, yes, this meets the requirements?
That's often what happens, but if you want um more information, I I would suggest that the applicant meet with um the fire department, Chris Bascom of the fire department, and tell them what, tell the fire department what you're doing and ask him for um direct comments about whether the project meets his requirements or not. And if it doesn't um or if it does, to send us a message that yes, it meets the requirements. If it doesn't.
Chris actually sent me all the requirements. Um so everything Chris sent us, we're doing. It's on my online permit, but he he, you know, he had a list of about ten different requirements and we're going to do all of them.
Okay.
All right, that's nice to know. Uh Bruce, your hand is up.
Yes, I I I think we should be clear about whether the uh compliance to ADA and AAB is mandatory, which I don't think it is, or whether uh the applicant is choosing to do uh um a slew of uh a a confluence of things that head in the direction of accessibility. Because I don't think uh the building department or us, um I don't think this is a project that unless, of course, there's some funding uh obligation that they're under, which we wouldn't necessarily know anything about, but I I I I wouldn't want us to uh be uh seen to be going down the the road of expecting compliance with AAB if it's not necessary.
Right. I mean, the other thing that came to mind was it's often uh required to have an accessible path from a parking space into the building. But to have a park, an accessible path out to the street may or may not be required. And since this isn't really a public building, I'm not, I agree with you, Bruce, it's not clear how much is required. Um Janet, your hand is back up.
So I think that if people are in wheelchairs or walkers living in this building or may, you know, at some time and they can't, you know, like if there's a fire, they can get out of the building and it's unsafe for them to go down the driveway. So I think, you know, our goal is to make sure this building works for people and it's safe, especially for people who are handicapped. So I I think I understand your point, Bruce, but I also feel like you know, almost all the projects we look at are accessible. If we know handicapped people, if it's a public building or people are handicapped going to be using it, we do require accessibility in a way to get to the building to the public way. I don't, I can't leave an example where, then the only one I can think of is the Emily Dickinson House, which, you know, um there was literally no way to do that. But I just, I do think that we should think about the safety and also just that people, if they're living in this home, can get out of the home and go and enjoy the street or, you know, the surroundings and things like that. So I I don't think it, it may not be a legal requirement, but it might be something we think about saying yeah, people shouldn't be just trapped in a house, you know, with and no way of getting to the street.
Okay. All right, uh Chris, I'm going to assume your hand is a legacy hand.
It's actually not. I wanted to say that um staff will check with Rob Mora to confirm exactly what's required here as far as accessibility.
Okay.
That's all.
Yeah, I I would, I would defer to Rob and the building permit process for determining that. Uh we can certainly be concerned about it, but in, you know, beyond that, I I'd leave it to them. Bruce, your hand is back up.
Yes, I I'm going to take issue with Janet a little more. I I think that uh, I think that the applicants already told us that they are uh committed to a fairly high level of accessibility. And I think that should be satisfactory. I think basically the applicants are going to have to make decisions about who they settle in their house and who they don't. And I think that's where the uh the judgment calls are going to be made. It's not going to be on us to be able to imagine some arbitrary uh category or class or type or individual who would be living there and and then put some standards of our son. I think uh we we must leave that judgment to the the management of this house and they will situate people in this place that for whom it's uh so safe and satisfactory. Otherwise, we've got an enormous problem on our hands.
All right, thanks Bruce. Um so before we're done, I would like to go through uh Chris's development application report and just uh air the questions that she had uh and recommended to us. Uh but before we do that, uh particularly because we had a woman who wanted to do a public comment earlier about this project, and I see a hand now about this project uh from another person. Uh why don't we take a couple of public comments now? So uh Pam, let's start by bringing Leila Kio over. All right, hello, Leila. Uh would, could you give us your name, name and your street address, presumably in Amherst? And uh you have three minutes.
Thank you. Um can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great, thanks. I want to first thank you, uh Mr. Marshall for correctly pronouncing my name. It was like I think that's really great. Thanks.
I I get lucky now and then.
Uh so um I live at forty-five Hunter Hill Circle, which is a couple of houses down from this property. Um we are, the neighborhood in the circle is uh mostly families. There's some students renting. Um I've lived here for about thirteen years with my family and there we have a couple of families with small children here um under the age of uh my son is eleven and there's a ten-year-old in the circle. Um so um I guess I'm wondering, I I did not, I don't understand the zoning, so I want to ask about that. Um I understand that you're not asked here to judge or or to make an approval about the zoning, but I just don't understand. Um because there's no other facility like this in our neighborhoods. It's all like individually owned and this is, this will represent a significant departure from uh for our neighborhood. And so I just want to understand what, how that happened. Um and then I just want to ask, I understand that um, you know, uh that we can't ask about the people who are living in the facility. Um but I wondered if we could ask questions of the folks uh for the Center for Independent Living about how many people would be there and what the turnover might be and what would this mean for traffic in our neighborhood? Um with small children in the neighborhood and there's no sidewalks, you know? My son often like rides his bike around that area. Is there going to be like a lot of traffic or ambulances and things like that? Like in this neighborhood now, will noise, will it affect our noise in the neighborhood? Um so I just would, uh you know, maybe, I don't know, as, you know, will there be new signage if that's the case? Um can there be sidewalks put in? If that's the case, maybe that would help the people living in the facilities too. Um so anyway, so those are some of the questions that came up for me as I listened to this discussion and I'm not sure how much of it can be answered. Um but uh if you can just um as much as possible, let me know. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Leila. Uh Chris, I see your hand. Go ahead and enter your comment and then we can see if Diana can answer any of that or whether she just wants to come back, you know, next time with some answers.
I just wanted to note that these um types of homes are scattered throughout Amherst. I think Nate told me one day that there may be as many as ninety of these homes throughout Amherst and he might be able to confirm that, but they tend to be extremely quiet. They're very, um you you hardly notice them. You hardly notice the people who live there. Uh they certainly don't make a lot of noise. They're just, you know, people who need extra help to live and you know, they're not um, well, I won't go any farther than that, but um they tend to be just very quiet homes and some of us live near them, these homes, and have not experienced any issues.
All right, thanks, Chris. Uh Diana, do you want to comment, uh respond to any of of the questions? Um uh Ms. Ms. Ke- Ms. Kio.
I think uh Chris said it best. Um CIL has hundreds of these homes throughout the state of Massachusetts. They are allowed by right. Um and you know, these are just individuals who are looking to live in their communities. They're no different than really any other neighbor that you have and um and that's really as much as I have to say on that matter.
All right, for a house of this size, uh how many staff members would be All right. For a house of this size, uh how many staff members would be there? And what kind of shifts would they be on?
Uh again, I apologize, but uh as this is my colleague's project, I'm not familiar with those details. As I'm, I'm not working with her client, but I will log the question for her.
Okay, thank you. Janet, I, go ahead.
So to answer, I think maybe the first question of Ms. Kio, Kio, okay, is um state law allows these homes, but and you can't, no town can say no to them. And um so they're like residential facilities, they're usually very small scale. They sort of mysteriously pop up. So in my neighborhood, the same thing happened, and it was also in this house. And we did have questions, the neighbors had questions, um you know, who's living there? And there was more information forthcoming. Um and, you know, in my neighborhood, it's a very quiet facility, to the point where I just, you know, wonder, I've only seen people come out a few times, and, you know, they might be in the backyard or something. And so, but the state law doesn't let the town say no to these types of residential facilities, and they could be for people with a variety, variety of different conditions. Um and what we're doing here on the planning board is granting a permit. You know, we have to allow the use and just making sure, you know, it kind of works, fix the code and works for them.
All right, thanks, Janet. Uh why don't we go to our next public commenter, Sue Kelly? Let's bring her back, and now is the time for your comment or questions.
Thank you. Um uh as I, my name's Sue Kelly, and I live at one forty-two Columbia Drive. So the back of my property um is kind of cornered to this home. Personally, I'm glad that they're providing another, there's another home provided for people um maybe with disabilities or who knows what. So that's fine. And my concern is more about a white vinyl privacy fence. Um and somebody mentioned the wild terrain in the back, and that is actually a lovely thing that provides natural privacy between a lot of the um homes here on our street. And I would, my concern is that they will cut down all the vegetation and put up this white, six-foot white privacy fence. And um I would not like to see that, uh because I'd much rather just see vegetation. I could see the house from my house uh in the winter. Um and that's fine, um but um, yeah, it's
Okay, so so Diana, I guess uh there's an expression from a neighbor who'd like you to consider uh eliminating the fence from your project and just letting the vegetation provide the screening function when it's there.
Um I'm not sure the full purpose of the fence. It's possible that it's necessary for the individuals who will be moving in for one reason or another. But Mike, who is the contractor on this project, he's here, and again, I'll relay this to Melissa. Um we can see if there's a way to disturb the vegetation as little as possible while still getting an offense. But um I'm sure we'd be happy to have that conversation and keep that in mind as we move forward.
Okay, I will say on the fencing topic, you might consider a, you know, whether a fence of a different color might be less obtrusive in the landscape.
Yeah, we might do clay if, you know, doesn't have to be white. I could do a clay more of a
Yeah, and 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 if if you are trying to just control access across the back so that nobody wanders off the property, uh you know, a chain link fence that's black or dark gray might be even less obtrusive than a solid fence. So that's just a thought for when you come back.
And we won't be removing any vegetation for the fence. That's why we're moving it onto the property so far is so the vegetation could stay. And again, now, that being said, we have to make sure it's maintained also.
Well, it's just the fence will become a pretty visible object for the, for your butters. Um Nate, your hand was up for a minute. Did you wanna jump in?
Yeah, I mean, I was gonna say the fence is tucked, you know, at least eighteen feet back from the property line and really close to the back ramp. I mean, it's, you know, if this were a single-family home, someone could put a fence up much closer without anything but a building permit. And so the um, you know, I think that having something twenty feet back to save as much, you know, will preserve the trees along the property line and any vegetation. I'm not sure they could push it back any further. I mean, if you look at the plans, it is, you know, almost touching the back deck, and then on the other side, on the, on the next corner, it's like almost touching the ramp. And so they've really, you know, brought it in at least eighteen feet uh so that there is, you know, still a lot of room between the fence and the property line.
Right. All right, um so maybe that, I don't see any more hands uh either from the public uh or board members at the moment. Um given our pretty heavy agenda this evening, I'm wondering whether we should just leave it there and uh continue this hearing to another date uh when maybe the uh CIL can come back with uh a little more information and maybe some altered plans to reflect the comments this evening. Uh before we do that, Bruce.
No, I was just gonna make that motion to continue, for continuation, and we need the date.
Yeah, we're gonna need a date from Chris.
And maybe that date should make sure that uh Diana's colleague is available, because clearly we need her.
Um we do have the date of June twenty-sixth, and we have two items on for that night. We have a um, a new um public restroom that's going in at Kendrick Park. It's called a Portland Lou. And we also have the open space and recreation plan that's going to be presented and um reviewed that night. So those are the two items for June twenty-sixth. Um we also have, well, there's a meeting scheduled for July third, but I don't think anybody would like to have a meeting on July third. That's just my guess.
Yeah, we haven't talked about that yet. Diana, would uh June twenty-sixth be enough time for you to come back?
Um yeah, it looks like Melissa is available on June twenty-sixth, so I will, I will let her know. And then if, if after she has a chance to review the questions that are being asked, um if it's not enough time, then um I'll make sure that she lets you know.
Yeah, she can be in contact with Chris.
Yep.
Do we say a time? What time would you like?
Time, you said we had a couple of other things?
Yes, I'd like the Portland Lou to go first, and that would be at six thirty-five, I think. And so this one could, we could say six forty-five.
You think that's a ten-minute conversation? Sure.
Well, same move.
I'm sure, I'm sure this body can talk about the Portland Lou more than ten minutes, but
Well, what we usually do is um we stack them close together, because if you don't do that, then sometimes you end up waiting for an hour until your next uh meeting is called, so.
All right, June twenty-sixth, that's six forty-five.
I moved.
All right, so Bruce has moved. I will go ahead and second. I second that motion to continue the hearing. Anybody wanna comment on the motion or on the project anymore before we have our vote? Okay. Uh this is a motion to continue the hearing to June twenty-sixth at six forty-five. Bruce.
I approve.
Brad.
Yes.
Jesse.
I approve.
Um Janet.
Yes.
Johanna.
Yes.
All right, Karen.
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. That's seven in favor. All right, so Diana and Michael, thank you for coming. And we'll hope to see some, some combination of your organizations that are meeting on the twenty-sixth.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. All right, so the time now is seven thirty-one. And we'll go on to the next item on the agenda. Another public hearing. So in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law forty-eight, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted. It is being held for the purpose of providing the opportunity for interested citizens to be heard. This public hearing is continued from May first, twenty twenty-four. Site plan review twenty twenty-four dash zero nine. The applicant is Amherst College trustees. Property is at two twelve North Hampton Road. Request site plan review approval under section three point three, three-nine of the zoning bylaw. Other non-academic facility related to the operation of Amherst College. To relocate an existing or existing bleachers and replace them with new game management box, including a lift for ADA accessibility, semi-portable bleachers and site improvements. Parcel at fourteen C dash thirteen in the RN zoning district. Any board member disclosures? I do not see any. All right, so the applicant, I assume the applicant is Rachel. Hello, Rachel, and welcome. Uh at this time, why don't you go ahead and tell us about your project and bring up any graphics you wanna show?
Sure.
And and then there's someone I see from Activas, and I don't know your name.
Hi, everyone. Um I'm Rachel Belanger. I'm a capital projects manager at Amherst College. I'm joined by Meg Bozinski of Activitas. Meg is a civil engineer. Um I'm also joined by Diane Ramsey, head coach of softball, um available for any questions that might come up about the operations um of the facility. Um as you said, the application is for a new game management box and bleachers at the softball field on North Hampton Road. Uh I'll just give brief context and turn things over to Meg. Um the game management box, sometimes we use the term press box interchangeably. It's a prefabricated structure, one hundred and forty-four square feet. Um that will be used only during games. It's for filming, announcing, um just kind of the the functions you expect um going with a college sports game. It will replace a portable piece of equipment that's um in the exact same location currently. The um game management box comes with new bleachers that will expand the seating capacity um expanding to meet the fans that we already have coming to games and just get that into proper bleachers rather than uh lawn chairs on the side. Uh most of the um concrete that's needed for the new game be- management box is already there. We're just expanding that slightly and then um pouring a proper foundation with a frost wall that the new structure will sit on top of. It will have a lift. Um and um as we discussed in some of the supplemental information, we plan to reuse the current bleachers on site. Um that's really not integral to the proposal. We plan to add the new bleachers and then thought we might as well um reuse the existing ones since we already have space for them. Um and can point out that location if that's um of interest to you all. So I, with that, um I'll let Meg share her screen and talk through the plan a bit, and um we're both happy to answer any questions.
Great. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, indeed.
Excellent. Okay. Well, thank you. I am Meg Bozinski with Activitas, um as Rachel mentioned, the designer for the project. So just wanted to do a quick view um for everyone about where we're talking um about. This is Amherst College's uh softball field area. Uh what you see in um picture one and picture two is the um the bleachers and the press box area that's there now currently. Um this press, the bleacher seat, you know, around um sixty to seventy people, I'm pretty small. And then there is this portable game management area um sitting behind that. And so we would like to improve this, to bring this kind of up to speed with other um division-three colleges, peer colleges, things like that um for Amherst softball team. So with that, let me go over to our site plan. Um and everyone can see this okay? Switched over?
Yep.
Okay. So in the existing condition, this is the proposed plan, but um where you can see my cursor is about where the existing bleacher is. And then there's the grass area behind that that portable game management area was. So what we're proposing here is to slightly expand the bleacher um with more of a, you know, it has kind of the the main area right behind and then the wings to it. Um and then put in a enclosed press box um game management area behind it. Um I'll show you another plan um just showing stairs and accessibility too. But what you'll see on this plan is we are providing um a handicap lift um for people to get up to that press box, because it is elevated kind of even with the top of um of the bleachers. And so let me go to, this is a planned view of those bleachers. And you can see we have um areas at the ground level for accessible seating and companion seats. Um and then we have our press box, this eight-by-eighteen enclosed box with two landing areas on either side. So people can climb the stairs of the press box, or I'm sorry, of the bleachers to get up there, or they can access um from the wheelchair lift to the left-hand side. Um let me go to, this is just a a section view um for comparison. Uh you know, this concrete pad is what we're adding. Um this press box or game management structure is an angle frame structure, so there's no actual um foundations of the box. It sits on a prefabricated um framed um foundation that sits on the actual concrete pad. Excuse me. And the existing bleachers pretty much sit on the existing concrete. Um some other work that we need to do as part of the project is relocate an electrical box. Um that electrical box sits kind of right where that bleacher is gonna go, that wing. So we're relocating that behind the bullpen area. And then there's some work um to bring power over to, from that new relocated box over to um to the lift area. Um that's really it. As Rachel mentioned, you know, from a seating and then thinking about, you know, some of the site plan questions about parking and things like that, we're not anticipating that the number of people coming to events changes with this, you know, um additional seating. It's really just like Rachel mentioned, um it's just people actually finding seats rather than having their chairs along the sidelines and things like that. So uh with that, happy to open it up to any questions um that you folks may have.
All right, thank you. Uh let's see, who who did we have that attended the uh site visit? Chris?
I think it ended up just being me and Chris. Um I, Bruce was in the, yeah. Somehow we lost Bruce in the process.
Okay.
Um but I can give a quick site, site visit report, if that's helpful.
Yes, please.
Great. Um so uh we went out onto the softball diamond, and we looked at the existing structure and took note of where the electrical box is. Um we looked at how it kind of fits in relation to the bullpen and the batting cages that are there. And with the exception of not quite understanding where on the site the existing bleachers will go, um we thought the diagrams were pretty straightforward. So that's my report.
All right, thank you. All right, um board members, any questions you you wanna ask of Amherst College? Well, I'm, this might be a first. No questions. Okay. All right, then we'll move on. Oh, Janet, thank you.
I just, I just have a quick question. I, in the packet, I thought I saw like a view, like if you were the pitcher or in the outfield, you could see what this would, the, what it would look like. Is that?
Um no, there's, the packet did not include a rendering. It's just a view of the existing structure.
Okay, then very quick question. How tall is the um, I mean, like the game management box gonna be? Just
Yeah, I can answer that. So the existing height, let me just zoom in. Well, actually, I can show you here. So this height from, you know, ground to top is about eleven and a half feet. All right. Um and the new box, let me just pull it over there. This is about thirteen, sorry, from here to here is about thirteen and a half feet. So we grow about two feet.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh Karen.
Um you know, I am just wondering, this is, this is not something that I'm really requesting, but I'm suggesting that uh if you can replace the pouring more rug uh concrete with these pavers that are put in, which just reduces the amount of impervious material. I I wonder if Amherst College could I wonder if Amherst College could look into something like that. Not just for this, but for, for all constructions that are going up. You know, you see a lot of, I'm seeing a lot of that here. Where you just have these, these blocks and the grass can continue to come in. And rainwater can continue to drain. This is a small thing. So I don't want you to change anything here. But my suggestion is that with all, all new platforms, that one look into an alternative way of positioning them.
All right.
Do you want me to address, for this particular project, we do need the concrete because it's required by the, by the bleacher manufacturer, but you know, I'll leave other Amherst projects if Rachel wants to come. I'm sure we can look at those in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Are there any other board, board comments? All right. Chris, I see that there are a significant number of waivers that were requested. You've listed them in the development application report. And am I right that you did send findings and conditions fairly late in the afternoon?
I did, yes.
All right.
Be in your email or I can just read them.
Yeah, why don't you do that? Because I'm going to have trouble finding it.
Yeah. So findings, I was suggesting that you use your standard finding rather than going through the list of findings. And the standard finding would be the board finds that the project complies with the relevant criteria of section 11.24 of the zoning bylaw. Is that a reasonable finding?
Yeah, I think I'm seeing a couple of heads nodding and nobody objecting.
Okay.
I'm sorry, are we looking for the development application report or moving on to findings and conditions?
Moving on to findings and
Findings and conditions, yeah.
Okay.
I didn't really find anything significant in the development application report except to agree with the fact that the waivers seemed reasonable. That was sort of what I
A whole long list of those, which I hope we can include in, in our motion on the findings.
Yep. And then the conditions, there are very few of them, only four of them. That the project shall be built substantially in accordance with the plan submitted to the planning board and approved on whenever you approve them. I didn't make reference to a management plan because Amherst College submitted a management plan the last time they did work here in the field and they're not changing it. The second condition would be substantial changes to the project and/or substantial changes to any approved site plans shall be submitted to the planning board for its review and approval prior to the work taking place. The purpose of the submission shall be for the planning board to approve the change and/or to determine whether the changes are de minimis or significant enough to require modification of the site plan review approval. Number three. This site plan review approval shall expire within two years of the date that it is filed with the town clerk. Unless it has been both recorded at the registry of deeds and substantial construction or use has commenced within the two-year time period. And number four. All work associated with the project shall be completed within 24 months from the date of issuance of the building permit. If more time is needed, the applicant shall come before the planning board at a public meeting for a review and approval of a construction and completion schedule for an extension of time.
And where do we list the waivers that we have approved?
I can list them for you.
Well, I just mean, do they show up in the findings that we find that it complies with the requirements of the bylaw, but?
Normally the waivers are just listed both on the application and in the development application report and you state that you approve the waivers as requested.
Okay.
I didn't find any reason to not approve these waivers.
All right. All right, so maybe I'm jumping ahead that the, I don't see a lot of hands from board members of, of things they want to talk about with these findings and conditions, but just to try to sort of rough out a couple of motions. One motion will be that we that the finding that you've written, you know, one about the findings that you've, that you've drafted here. And one about that we approved the waivers that were listed. And then one that we approve the conditions as proposed or as edited by the time we're done with the conversation. And one to close the hearing. Does that seem to cover everything, Chris?
It certainly does. Yep.
All right. Bruce? You want to?
Do we need four motions for that? We'd have to vote four times. That could take quite a while. I mean, could typically, don't we say we approve the application with the following conditions and findings and waivers? And then, and then we tack on the closing the public meeting at the end of it.
Well, let's see. Yeah, we could, we could head in that direction. I don't see that Chris is objecting. I do see a hand from Fred, so we'll want to talk a little more before
I, I have a question as well. Had to do with the waivers that we, I support, I will support all of the waivers and probably the lighting plan as well, but it is a ball field and sometimes ball fields have lights, you know, and so the question is, I didn't see it on the plan, but I may not have looked closely enough. Is there any significant lighting that we should know about beyond something in the press box?
Well, I see there, it says no lighting is proposed as part of this project.
Okay, sorry. Yes, there we go. Good. Thank you. That's it.
Okay.
And I'll just add to that, there's no, there's no existing lighting in terms of like big overhead bright lights you would have. There's no lights that allow you to play a game after dark.
That's what I imagined. Yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. And Bruce, Fred, you've got your hand up.
Fred is talking, but he's muted.
Oh, yeah, Fred, you need to try again. There you go.
Sorry about that. I've just, in terms of process here, I think we need to close the public hearing. And I was going to move to do that and then we can act on all these.
Okay.
I think we have to close the hearing before we
Yeah, we, we're, we haven't been particularly careful about whether we closed it before or after we did the other votes, but if you want to start us off, that's fine. I suppose I could ask for whether there's any public comment on this before we close the hearing. So, members of the public, all five of you. Do any of you want to have a comment on this project? All right, I am not seeing anyone with, from the public wanting to raise their hand. Chris, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I wanted to respond to Fred in, in the previous times. The boards would close the public hearing and then have a discussion and then vote on conditions and findings. What we've been doing more recently is that we keep the public hearing open and then have all of the discussion. And the reason for that is sometimes we need additional information that only reveals itself when we're talking about findings and conditions. And so if we have the public hearing open, we can seek that additional information and add it. But if we close the public hearing, then we can't take any additional information. So that's why we've changed the practice. So I hope that makes sense.
All right. I guess that was a satisfactory answer, Fred?
Yeah, I'll, I'll withdraw that.
Okay. All right, Bruce?
I'll move the approval of the SBR. Insert the appropriate number with the waivers as requested. With the conditions, the four conditions reviewed and the, and the single finding. And that we close the public hearing.
All right, thank you. Karen?
I second.
Thanks, Karen. All right, members, any additional comments before we go into that vote? All right. All right, we'll do a roll call. Bruce?
I approve.
All right, Fred?
Aye.
Thank you, Fred. Jesse? Janet?
Aye.
Johanna? Was Johanna still with us? Looks like we, looks like we lost Johanna. All right. And Karen?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. That's six in favor. And one apparent absence. So Rachel and Meg, thank you for coming. Good luck with your project and you can play ball.
Thank you. Have a great night. Thanks for your time.
All right. Good night. All right, the time is 7:53. We have gone through the first four items in our agenda. We customarily take a break around eight o'clock. I think this is a good time to do that. So why don't, why doesn't everybody try to be back by eight o'clock? That's seven minutes from now. And turn off your cameras and mute your microphones and then turn your cameras on when you come back. Thank you. All right, Chris, I think we can, or Pam, I think we can bring back the panel.
Okey doke.
I don't know about you, but I don't know what to do with a seven-minute break. That's way too long.
I could have used a few more minutes.
I chased my cat. That was good.
Well, if it were any longer, I would have gone outside and enjoyed the evening.
It's getting pretty nice out at my house. I just ran around and opened up windows to get some air.
Pretty nice.
I did the same. I also put fans on, bringing some air in.
Yep.
I ate all my strawberries that I picked. I have a free, I have a strawberry share from simple gifts because I was I've done enough to be able to pick strawberries whenever I like. Assuming, of course, I can't do it in November, of course. That hasn't been arranged yet, but one lives for that day.
All right, let's see, I guess we're still waiting for Fred.
Okay, where am I?
There's Fred. All right, and it looks like Johanna hasn't made her way back to us, so we will proceed. All right, so time now is 8:01 and we are now up to the next item on the agenda, University Drive Potential Housing Overlay Zone. And this is a continuation of a comment of some earlier conversations about a potential overlay zoning district to allow more dense housing along that street. Nate, I suspect you're here to guide us in this conversation.
Sure.
Anything you want to say about the draft that you had distributed in our packet?
Yeah, I, I can walk through it a bit. I mean, I think, you know, the, you know, staff's perspective is that we're getting to a point where we'd like the planning board to make a, you know, vote this or move this along as a zoning amendment. And so, you know, it's going on a year. Uh, and then that'll start a formal process. And so, uh, you know, there is comments, you know, writing, um, you know, written narrative and there's been comments submitted. And so, you know, the idea is to have a discussion and if it needs to continue, it can continue, but to really try to move this forward. And so, you know, I think this is a nice opportunity.
Oh, it's hot time to call the question.
Yeah, I mean, you know, at some point if someone's, you know, willing to do that, but let me share my screen. And just, I guess, as the, uh, you know, generally what we're talking about is hasn't changed in terms of geographic area. So it's everything south of Amity Street, outlined in the solid black line, north of Route Nine, you know, one property or two off of University Drive. So the area is owned, Office Park and Limited Business. Uh, this is proposed to be an overlay zone that really only applies for, you know, three uses. Uh, so it's kind of similar to say like the parking garage overlay we had proposed, or, um, you know, there's other, other overlays. Uh, you know, so the existing zoning, everything else stays in place. Maybe some instances where there's, um, you know, questions that the building commissioner staff would deal with in, in the future, but you know, so what we see here, so Office Park, Limited Business, R and D still remains. And so if someone needs, wants to utilize those zoning districts, they can. You know, the general, I, you know, this was written as if it's pretty close to a zoning amendment, the general, um, statement and the purpose, uh, hasn't changed too much as we last spoke. It did, you know, we did mention, uh, in the purpose, um, you know, housing for undergraduate students, uh, and dense housing. And so really, you know, this is some of the, the purpose of it, you know, and, and you know, from staff's ideas, why, why skirt it and not mention students or dense housing or multifamily housing? Because that's really what it is. Uh, we establish the, the area of the district. We have, uh, dimensional standards that are applicable only to those uses, uh, that are mentioned. And there's no waiver provision for what's, what's in the, in the overlay. And so the idea would be that, you know, someone couldn't ask to waive the height or setbacks. And so everything there is, is pretty generous. But, you know, we're not, someone can come in and ask for an additional five feet. And there's no additional lot area for family or, or, you know, um, unit. And so that would, that, that allows kind of that multifamily density. There's a basic minimum lot area of 12,000 square feet, a lot frontage of 40, a maximum building coverage of 60 and a lot coverage of 85. And, you know, as we spoke, uh, previously, there is a fair number of wetlands and other environmental or site constraints. And so all that has to be taken into account. So even the project that Barry Roberts, the Roberts Group has proposed, proposed on the corner of Amity and University Drive, although that will be coming, um, as a site plan review, it also has to be reviewed by the Conservation Commission and manage, um, a number of resource areas and probably propose mitigation and other strategies to manage stormwater. And so, you know, it's not as if they, you know, we're, we're providing these coverages and someone can just then put concrete down on everything and, and forget about the wetlands or other environmental, um, issues. Uh, we have a setbacks that are kind of specific to, you know, different sides of the street or to different, you know, roads. And some of that is to allow for the access drive on the west side to remain and become a multi-use path to allow, uh, setbacks on both sides to be generous. So if there's taller buildings, uh, you know, there, the streetscape is still, um, not, you know, it's, it's still a generous. It's actually really wide right of way. And so it's not going to feel too much, too cramped. Um, we still have a side yard setback and a rear setback, a building height of 60 feet or five floors. The height as in, in our bylaw doesn't include mechanical equipment or screening or solar. You know, standards and conditions. So we have three uses that are, is defined apartments, social dormitories, which is new, and then mixed use buildings. So apartments, you know, not allowed within 500 feet of the major intersections. And then the conditions are that there's no limit to the number of dwelling units. And that there has to be a proportional mix of bedrooms, uh, by bedroom size. And so we're not having a 50% as in the bylaw now. There's actually been a number of instances where a developer, uh, you know, really has to work because we say no more than 50%. So they might even have two different bedroom types, but given the number of units to get that 50% becomes something where they have to, you know, change. And so here it's really at the permit granting authorities, uh, determination. So, you know, we're saying there needs to be a proportional mix and it's something that they would have to provide. Social dormitories is a defined and existing category in our bylaw. It's for, um, you know, there's a few different instances when it can be applied. So again, not allowed within 500 feet of an intersection. There's no limit to the number of units. Now, we're saying that they need to have 24/7 management in response. Uh, this doesn't apply to fraternities or sororities. Uh, and they have to provide a management plan according to the rules and regulations of the permit granting authority. And so, you know, this is pretty similar to the conditions that are in the current bylaw. And, you know, with the social dormitories that have been permitted, there's, you know, there's one that's been occupied and one that's will be under construction. There's been really no issues in terms of how they're managed. Uh, and then mixed use buildings. You know, we're using the 30%. It's really similar to a definition that we have. Uh, however, mixed use buildings located more than 500 feet from the intersections of Northampton Road uh, and University Drive and Amity Street and University Drive have a 15% floor area requirement instead of 30. And so, speaking with some developers and others, you know, the 30% is something that because there's no waivers and unless we want to start writing in different calculations, you know, 15% is the minimum. It can be more, but it allows some flexibility for having mixed use buildings on the interior of University Drive, you know, along the core of it. You know, this thought might be that 30% would actually discourage any, any kind of, um, mixed use building if they have to, you know, or they would, uh, you know, build a mixed use building and not occupy that 30% and just choose to use apartments. And so we're hoping that this 15% will actually encourage more mixed use buildings. Uh, there's general requirements. So multiple buildings and uses, there can be more than one building, uh, with any permanent use located on a single lot. So that allows for, you know, right now, it, it depending on how the bylaw is worded, if, you know, you might only have one building on one property. So this allows to have multiple buildings on a property. Product open space, uh, we don't have a definition in terms of a percentage before it was 20% of the floor, um, area and had some other requirements. And so we made that a bit more flexible. Every product shall provide usable open space. Can be on the interior or exterior of a building, could be on the site. We're saying that the, um, access road would, is, you know, encouraged to be a 10 foot wide, multi-use pedestrian path. Uh, you know, product open space shall not be in service areas or driveways or parking areas. This was something similar that had been in the, in the overlay. Uh, and then outdoor amenities and the planting of street trees is encouraged. And so, you know, really the, the point of this is to help the, you know, the planning board here to look at each project and say, okay, what, what kind of space is there? It can be plaza space. It could be lawn space. Could be on the interior. It could be a lobby. It could be, you know, both interior, exterior without really being script. Um, you know, right now I think the planning board still could do this with projects, but it doesn't seem like it's, it, you know, if we do it very well. And so I think that having some guidance here is helpful. Parking. Saying that all of Article 7 shall apply with exceptions. So, you know, in uh, 7.00 through 005, we have a minimum number of parking spaces. So if it's certain amount of retailer commercial, you know, so many spaces per square feet. Uh, and then we have a pretty strict, um, shared parking, uh, section. And so we're saying that none of those apply. Uh, but shared or leased parking is encouraged and the permit granting authority shall submit, you know, any management plan, uh, with that. And so because it, and there's not a lot of neighborhoods here. I think every developer is going to figure out what kind of use they have and what, how a parking, uh, needs they have. Uh, there's public transit. There's a swift bike way. We're trying to have another mixed use path. And so you know what? If, if people don't think they need cars here and developer thinks they can have so many units or a commercial space, then that's kind of at their discretion. Uh, you know, as we've spoken with, uh, uh, one, um, developer and attorney, you know, the, if you want to bring in a certain commercial retail use that drives the parking, uh, some want a lot, some want a little. And so, you know, I think having this allows, you know, a developer to really make that case. And so, you know, I think having, you know, two spaces per unit, uh, is, is kind of antiquated. And really we're trying to encourage multimodal transportation here. And so hopefully this parking requirements will get us there. Uh, and then there's design guidelines. Uh, again, we had some prescriptive guidelines in terms of setbacks or something every so many feet or a step back of so many feet. We've eliminated a top floor step back. So right now, you know, you can have five stories along the front, front, um, front setback line. Uh, we encourage that, you know, there's some overhang awnings or some differentiation between the first and second floors and mixed use buildings. Uh, even the front building facade shall have variations in architectural detail, change in plane or other treatment to break down scale and mass. And so before we said something, if it was a facade over 100 feet, you know, every so many feet, it should be stepped back so many feet. And that, that honestly seems like something that, um, we don't have to have in so detailed, but I think having something like this allows the planning board and the review authority to look at it and say, okay, how, how are you breaking down the mass of a facade? What, how are you treating the, um, first floor and upper floors? And so, you know, the new Fieldstone project at UMass uses the same material. They have different direction of it. Uh, but they have different, um, penetration patterns. And I think it looks really nice. And so others have commented that they like the Fieldstone project. It's also setback from the street. Uh, you know, 35 to 40 feet. And so, um, you know, there is a distance there that works, but in terms of how they work with the front facade, uh, you know, it, it looks nice. And even the side facades. Um, to the extent possible, we want parking behind buildings or consolidated. You know, rooftop mechanical equipment should be screened. And then, you know, movers or other mechanical equipment placed away from visible areas. And so, you know, that's the extent of it. Um, again, the idea is to really encourage, you know, apartments, mixed use buildings or social dormitories on this section of University Drive. Uh, you know, the hope would be that maybe there's five or six sites that would be developed using this overlay. I mean, you know, there's existing buildings. And so the thought would be some might be redeveloped, some might be added on to, but you know, if, if it's not, if there's not enough of a, um, you know, lot coverage or building coverage, then this won't even be used. So if we're not incentivizing development here with flexible standards or, or, you know, um, uh, you know, reduced parking requirements, then to me the overlay wouldn't move forward. So, you know, staff sees it as a great opportunity to increase beds and have some commercial retail development down on University Drive. And, you know, I think at the last meeting, the planning board members all kind of agreed that that was a purpose of this. And, you know, I don't want to shy away from saying, yeah, well, it's okay if there's a social dormitory down here. You know, if there's 300 beds for students in the middle of this, of this corridor.
You're talking too much now.
And there's other, uh, mixed use buildings on the corners and that's okay. And so, you know, if maybe here, if we can actually get, you know, 1,000 beds, 1,200 beds along University Drive, then we can actually start changing the housing equation in town. And so I, I think, you know, we can have that conversation and maybe we don't think that it should be here, but I think we have to have it somewhere. And so, uh, you know, we can't start talking about, let's not have a duplex conversion if we're not talking about where else can we put a lot of residents who need housing. And so staff thinks that the way this is written, it'd actually be used. I think the previous version that we looked at uh, and talked about a few weeks ago, and that was presented, say, at the end of February, would not have actually been used. I think we, I think I said that, but I, I, after speaking with some others, after the planning board meeting, it was confirmed that most developers, it wouldn't get you to what you needed to. So we could have gone through that whole process and adopted it. And I don't think it would ever have been used. And so, you know, this bylaw right here, I think would actually get used. And so that's, you know, that, that's something staff would be happy about.
All right. Thanks, Nate. I, I will say to the rest of the board, I, uh, encouraged Nate to put together what he thought was the right approach for this area, uh, after our last, uh, significant conversation, whether it was what, six weeks ago, maybe? Um, so thank you, Nate and, and Rob Mora for, for putting in this effort. Uh, so I see a couple of hands from board members and I saw one and more hand at one point, but it has dropped. So uh, we will start with Jesse.
Thanks, and thanks, Nate. Um, generally I totally agree. I'd love to see this move forward. Um, I have one concern and one minor comment. And my, my concern is the way it reads, and please correct me if I'm not understanding. There's nothing stopping this from potentially being all apartments or all social dormitories and zero mixed use. In, like, it could play out that way. Or am I not understanding the way it's written?
Yeah, we're saying that within 500 feet of those two, you know, southerly points, those intersections, there can't be, it can only be mixed use buildings. So on the corners.
Just on the corners. Okay.
So. And then so on the interior, right? So, you know, a stretch of.
Interior could be all just housing.
Right.
Potentially. And I guess that's what, that's, that's what I've, my, my one reservation about the way this is put together right now, because I really feel like that's a loss for the town if that were to happen. There are currently commercial things there. Um, I, 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 I would want to encourage more mixed use in that strip. Because it'll be beneficial for the students, if that's what we're talking about, and for residents. I don't know what the solution is. But the, the way, when I looked at that, that was my first worry was that as you've expressed, I think that's what developers will probably lean towards is not mixed use if they don't have to. And so.
Well, isn't it, I mean, I think you could also argue that if there's actually a critical mass of students down there, then there's, then it's likely that there will be commercial, that there'll be a reason to put commercial there because there's all these people who could walk right to it. I mean, maybe, maybe not.
We've had this conversation with the buildings in town, right? That they left them vacant for years because it wasn't worth the money to get money. So.
Okay.
And that might happen there too. But okay, then in 10 years, maybe the situation changes and there's space available for commercial stuff to then populate. But again, I'm just, it's my reservation. And again, I don't know what the right solution is.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, so 500 feet from Route Nine would be to the entrance of Big Y. So it's almost to the CVS building. 500 feet south from Amity Street is, um, you know, past the Encharter Building and halfway into the open space between the next, um, you know, next, uh, um, structure. And so it's a, you know, I mean, we could increase that distance if we're worried about it. I think that, yeah, I mean, right, I, I agree with Doug. I, I feel like maybe at first it might seem like that, but I, I would assume that if we get enough critical mass down there, people would take advantage of it with in non-residential space, but. And you had a, you had a second comment, Jesse.
So it's, it's less important, the, um, way it's written about the interior, uh, multi-use path as suggested. I wonder if we can make that a little stronger because I think that'll be a really nice feature to keep so that there was a secondary access for pedestrians, bikes and whatever. But, but again, that could come up in reviews in the future also. But it just seems like if we, if we really like that as a design element, why not make that a little stronger in the, in the wording? That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Jesse. Uh, Bruce, you're next.
Uh, I'm with Jesse pretty substantially. Uh, certainly, uh, I'm with you, Nat, Nat too. Thank you. I, I think it's the time has come that we need to move with this. I'm, uh, uh, as Jesse is, uh, supportive, uh, with the, um, but I did read the, uh, the 500 foot part and I thought, well, that's 1,000 feet of University Drive. And I thought that, uh, it was about, uh, half a mile long. Maybe it's more, it's probably, maybe it's more than a mile long. So I, maybe we could discuss whether it's 500 or 700 or 800 or 1,000. But I, I'm, I'm, uh, over the conversations we've had, uh, for the past few months or past 10 months on this. Um, Nate has made the case, uh, consistently that, uh, that, um, that the, the commercial, we, we need to put some faith into commercial developers to be able to judge what, uh, their needs are. And I think if we're going to do that anywhere in town, this is the place to do it. So I'm being, uh, increasingly persuaded, Nate, to, to your, uh, way of thinking on this. And so I'm basically prepared to substantially support the document as presented. Um, uh, I had issues initially with thirty percent. I thought it should be fifty percent. I was concerned about the. The having apartments, uh allowing apartments uh on on some portions of that. But of course, it doesn't say that they have to be. It just says that they can. And your comment of a moment ago is that it doesn't preclude uh. Um, some level of mixed use and and thirty percent of the first floor is a pretty minimal. That's ma- metric of mixture. So generally speaking, I'm uh, I'm I'm good to go with this. Uh. I have uh. I had a question. Is there a reason why sorority and fraternity buildings shouldn't be put here? I mean, I don't think I particularly. Uh, argue for them being there, but is is there if if a sorority, what would be the problem with a sorority being there if they wanted it? Is that the is is that a? A preclusion that we need to have? Um, that's a question you can answer. And then on the last page. Just a drafting thing uh in the uh, of course, you you I would always encourage instead of use of bullets. To use numbers and letters, because then I can precisely reference the design guideline, item five. Uh, which is the only uh paragraph or sentence in the whole text that talks about. Parking lot should not face and should be located behind buildings. Everywhere else it shall. And I wonder whether that's just a an oversight on your part or whether there's a particular reason why you want to use the conditional on that particular sentence and nowhere else. So those are my two comments. Um. Um, uh. And I I I could um. I think I can support five hundred feet um as the uh zones of exclusion for apartment buildings.
All right. Thanks, Bruce. Janet?
So I have to confess to being really perplexed about the process. Um, you know, we've been talking about this overlay district, you know, this, you know, this year. And, you know, we've offered comments. Um, they were summarized at the last meeting, and every time we get a proposal from the planning department, it. Not only ignores the comments, it goes further in the direction in a direction away from what people are concerned about. And um. So I just, I'm not sure why we're, you know, I mean. It would seem really clear to me that the board very firmly supported having mixed-use buildings. On University Drive with some percentage, at least thirty percent. Of commercial and retail space, maybe somewhere in the building, but the front-facing facades should be, you know, we're looking for a vibrant. Commercial retail district offices, people living there, walk, you know, working there. Um, you know, someone who's going to the Big Y can stop and have a beer somewhere and just, you know, the whole thing. And so. I think we've been really, most of us have been very clear on that. And now I think that is gone. I think that. We are going to lose um existing businesses that are there. It will eventually, I mean, the most lucrative thing for a builder to build is an apartment building. Or a dorm, right? And um. You know, i- if, you know, and so. That is what's going to happen. I'm particularly concerned about like the parts of University Drive that have. Shopping centers, which have, you know, grocery stores have a very low margin. Nursing homes are going out of business in Massachusetts. Um, we have a one-story nursing home. You know, next to a healthcare facility. And, you know, I was going to suggest that we eliminate the um office park from the overlay because we want to keep those businesses there. Um, and so I I can't support this proposal. It seems. You know, it's not only it's not incorporating what we said last time, it's, you know, it's just, it's getting more and more narrow. And to me, when I read it, I thought, wow, this looks like a developer's dream, like. No parking requirement, no mixed-use requirement, maximum amount of buildings. Um. And, you know, you know, and then I was thinking, well, at least if it was a forty B. There'd be an inclusionary zoning requirement over. Ten or twelve percent. I think it's twenty percent or twenty-five percent. And so I think this is too much, and I can't support it. I could support it. You know, if you're going to go to an apartment building, that twenty-five percent of the units have to be affordable. If it's a social dorm. Twenty-five percent are affordable to students because they can't afford to live in our town anymore. But there's no, it's a lot of give and there's no give back. And I, you know, we, I don't, if the planning department feels like this is their vision. You know, continue on, but to keep asking us our opinions. And then ignoring them. You know, and of course, of course, a developer can build a three, a four-story building with mixed use. Barry Roberts has a proposal for that. On the corner of Amity Street and University Drive. So. You know, there it is. And it's kind of a nice-looking thing, and it's supported by the people nearby. Of course, he could build that further down University Drive. And if we're giving more height, more density, let's get something for the town and let's create the vision that we were talking about. And, you know, no one is going to convert an apartment building. To commercial storefronts. I've heard from architects over and over again. Really difficult to do, really expensive. Um, you know, once your commercial space, your commercial space, it's hard to convert to apartments. So, you know, if no, if we rezone it, adding height and density. Requiring mixed-use buildings only. Um, and protecting, you know, the the businesses that we want, like the nursing home and the um. Um, you know, the healthcare facility. You know, and nobody builds it, then we can come back and do it again. This is not the only moment. Um, we have here. So I can't support this, and it's drafted. You know, maybe the planning board will have a different proposal. Than the planning department, but we need to put stuff in here for the town and for the townspeople and take our vision. And. I just don't think we can just watch, you know, sections of our town turn into apartment buildings and dorms and just hope for the best.
All right. Thanks, Janet. Fred?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh. I'm one of the people on the planning board who uh. Was quite insistent about the uh. Uh, desirability of uh. Uh, shifting the uh. The tax base of Amherst more towards commercial. Um. And so it probably will be a surprise to many of you. Uh, that I am now uh. Uh, had a change of heart here. Uh, I think uh. The time has come. To uh. Definitively. Shift the market. Away from the enormous economic pressures. That is uh now evident in the general residence zoning district. And uh. Uh, I I have had a a a significant change of heart here. I do think we might look at the dimensional uh. Uh, limitation on apartments and possibly increase. Those footage numbers from something higher than five hundred, particularly. On the north end of this uh, which it's something we need to look at closely. Uh, but. Uh. We are going to lose entire neighborhoods. Uh, we're already seeing it. And uh. Uh, I I I I. This, this is needed. And uh. I'm willing to say, okay, uh. You know, nothing's perfect. But uh. Yeah, uh, we have got to shift the uh economic uh, the the market. Uh, that is endangering uh the livable neighborhoods. That now exist in Amherst and won't exist. Uh, unless something definitive is done. So uh. Yeah, I've definitely had a change of heart on this. Uh, it is very important. On this one that. You know. A- as it were, if if we build it, that they in fact come.
All right. Thanks. Thanks, Fred. Um, I guess the hands that I see are people that have already commented. So before we move on. Um, I want to give Karen a chance to comment, and then I want to make a couple of comments. Karen, do you want to say anything?
Um, you know, I. Thank you, Nate, for concretely putting this all down. I think that was really needed, and it was really helpful. Um. I'm not. Ready to push either way. I do. Understand what Jesse's saying that. It concerns me that that that. Yes. And and what Janet is saying, the most lucrative thing, of course, is to build. College dormitories. So that's. What's going to happen in a way we need it. I I'm pushing so much for. Ways to have the university take over that job. Uh, quickly, so the town doesn't have to do all that work. But. I I'm still listening, and I'm finding myself going back and forth with everyone that speaks. So. I wish I could add more wisdom, but I'm kind of on the receiving end, going back and forth.
Okay, thanks, Karen. Um, I guess I'll say uh. That by and large, I I support this this measure. Um, I think that it it does allow developers to dream. And that's not a bad thing. Um, and that, you know, many of our most vibrant cities were have been substantially shaped by developers. Um, and to I I disagree that it doesn't give the town anything. I think that it does. Gives the town a pressure relief valve. For the pressures on our residential neighborhoods. And that, to me, along with the tax revenue that's likely to come from this. Is quite substantial and would be of great value to the town. So. I I disagree with the some of the comments that have been made. Um, I I I have a question for you, Nate, about one aspect, which is the. The proportion of unit mixes. And leaving that until site plan review. Seems kind of late in a developer's process. And, you know, if I were a developer, I wouldn't really want to get too far into it. Without knowing what the planning board is going to tell me I have to have for my proportional mix. And so are you. Expecting that we this will prompt developers to ask to meet with us before a site plan review? Um, actually, that actually reminds me, one question I had was. Who, which of the two bodies in town is the permitting authority for this? Is it? Planning board or is it zoning board? And so I'll just pose those two questions to you right now.
Yeah, sorry, I'm just writing them down. Um. I mean, I was envisioning this being, you know, site plan review through the planning board. So the per- planning board would be the permit granting authority. Uh, and then in terms of site plan review. You know, typically, well, you know, um. We meet with developers. And so. You know, if this is the standard and condition in the bylaw, they'll see that, you know, before. You know, they're getting before they actually get to site plan review, right? So they'd see the bylaw and say, what is allowed? And staff would say, well, here's what the, you know, typically what the planning board is looking for. And, you know, it it. You know, do we, you know, at one point we said at least, you know, ten percent is three bedrooms or more, or no more than fifty percent be the same bedroom count. But. Um, you know, we could point to other places in the bylaw and say, here's, you know, or other other um. Approved projects and say, here's what we've been looking for. And so. It's something that, you know, likely a developer would approach staff. Before they submit a site plan review application and say, okay, what does this mean? Um, you know, as a prompt for for that discussion. And, you know, we could have. Uh, you know, some of the discussions staff had was, well, you know. Do we be so prescriptive that there's no? You know, they can't vary it, right? So if we say it shall be thirty percent this size and shall be that size, and there's no waivers, then you're kind of stuck. Uh, and so, you know, typically a developer will go through the bylaw with staff or have their team to understand what the conditions are.
All right, well, um. Uh, that, you know, even if they that prompts them to come and talk to town staff. You know, ultimately, it's not staff that's going to be approving the site plan review. So I would think that. You know, it would it would certainly be incumbent on you. If not the developer to raise the issue at a a planning board meeting.
Right. Well, I think, yeah, I mean, some of it would be telling the developer that, you know, we're not, the board wouldn't approve all one bedrooms. And so.
Well, how do you know that? That's what I.
You know, I mean, we'd say, you know, so Barry's project, when he went to the ZBA Fair Variants, he built those buildings as shells. Without having the interior layout, right? So the architects. Had all those nice renderings, those three D renderings that were in the paper. Without even having floor plans. And so they had a rough floor plan, but they probably had the ability to change bedroom sizes and still keep the exterior appearance pretty similar. And so, oh, you know, I think a developer can get to the point where they have a rough building footprint and design. And can get to the site plan review, because typically we don't get to the interior anyways. And say it's a double-loaded corridor, the planning board wants a mix of different bedroom counts. They could do that, right? I mean, and so if they're already so set that they're not going to even change a floor plan. And because the planning board right now, even in site plan review, could say, we don't like the front of that building. We want to push back five feet. And the developer is going to say, well, then I'm going to lose four bedrooms or four units, because. I want to have four bedroom, you know, four bedroom units there. Now you're making me have three in the way the walls line up. And it's like, well. That's what it's going to take to get through the approval process. And so for me, a developer can come to site plan or view. And not actually know what the interior of the building is going to look like. They can have a rough idea in terms of a double-loaded corridor, and here's like the layout of bedrooms. But. If the board says, you know, we want to have. This kind of mix, they should have that ability to to change it. And maybe, you know, and so. Uh, it, you know, that might be more of a conversation than during the permit process than we've had.
Yeah, well, I guess I guess as having worked on a bunch of. Dormitories in particular, but, you know, multifamily things. You you, one of the tools is to. Use the larger windows that you can get with a lit at a living space. As opposed to the smaller windows that are probably at the bedrooms. And the and the rhythm of the. Of the elevations is highly informed by the type of unit that is behind it. Um, and so. You know, I I would, I wouldn't know what to draw, you know, for that site plan review without at least having in mind how many. Uh, what what the units would be. So I think it would be more likely that we would see projects show up. With a particular unit mix. That they're saying, this is what we'd like to do.
Yep.
And and then we could talk about, well, is that okay with us?
Right. Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think, you know, like, right now, someone is going to stack, you know, bigger bedrooms in the corners. In certain areas. And so, um. You know, I think there's a pattern to how it gets developed. But I think. You know, having this as a condition does allow the the planning board to say, here, we want to see, you know. Here's what you're proposing. Is there, could you vary it a bit, right? And so. You don't have to accept what's provided and, you know, and applied for. You have the ability to then ask for for changes.
Okay. All right. So um, I see three board member hands, and Chris, your hand is up. I'm going to let you. You want to interject in this topic?
Yeah, I wanted to know if the planning board is therefore welcoming. Developers to come in and speak with them early on in the process to talk about these issues of. Size of units, et cetera. Is that something that you would appreciate?
Certainly would. I I think one of the frustrations I've had with this with our. Permit process is that we don't see things early enough to to influence the sort of fundamental site. Uh, layout, I guess, you know, I mean. I mean, you know, I was unhappy with the the project down on Main Street and. I hoped that it could have been otherwise, but by the time we saw it, it was. Pretty well picked in.
Okay.
Okay, um. All right. So let's go ahead and we'll go through the the other hands. Um. And um. Janet?
Thank you. Um, I have some, so I was, wanted to point out that Fieldstone, which is an appealing building, partly because the materials used. And the changes in the facades also has all along the street front. It's not bedrooms. It's, you know, it's a coffee shop, it's people working out, and it's very welcoming. Like, I felt like walking into it, you know? And so I I think that we shouldn't lose that kind of vitality that first floor. Um, activities can create, um, and also a sense of community. I wondered if you've done a calculation on the number of units that would be lost by having thirty percent. Requiring thirty percent um in a mixed-use building, like, are you going to lose? Five hundred units on your street? I mean, it it sounds, you know, it's like, have you done that calculation? Are you going to lose two hundred? Um, I don't think this is going to be a deal breaker for a developer getting many extra stories. And um, but I'm just wondering, is, can you quantify that, you know? Um, so if you're looking for like thousand to twelve hundred, you know, units, which I know multiple bedrooms, that's like thousands of people. Uh, moving into University Drive. But, you know, if you pick off some bedrooms, you know, for the thirty percent, do you have an idea of how much that is? My second question is, I'm not opposed to the University Drive as a student housing district. It's been suggested. In many of our plans. My second question is, I'm not opposed to the University Drive as a student housing district. It's been suggested in many of our plans. I would like to, I wondered if you had looked at other cali college towns and universities that had. Ten university towns that had set up a housing district and figure, you know, talk to them about what worked and what didn't. Were the, what were the impacts good and bad? And so, or, you know, lessons learned, like what would you do differently? And so we can kind of use that knowledge. So those are two questions.
Um, Nate, before you answer, I was just going to point out, uh, the Fieldstone project has two buildings. You know, there's the front building that faces Mass Ave that does have some commercial space in it. But the rear building is entirely housing units for graduate students and um. You know, it does not have any commercial space in it, so. For the record.
Yeah, I mean, I think the vitality is on the street for sure.
Yeah. Nate, anything you want to say there? I mean, I know you started with some images at at other university towns.
Yeah, I mean, I think the idea about the mixed uses, it's not the units, it's then say the parking or other requirements that a non residential space would have. And so it's not just like, oh, it's, you know, five thousand square feet of non residential space. It's like, what are. The other needs of that space in relationship to the site. And so it's not just like, oh, you know, so saying, um. If we, you know, if there's an existing project and it's like, yeah, we have ten thousand, we're proposing ten thousand square feet of retail. You could say, well, that's so many units. It's then, well, you know. If they want to put certain uses in there, then that drives the parking and might drive site amenities and plaza space or outdoor dining. And so it changes the whole project. It's not just like a one for one, ten thousand square feet equals, you know. Thirty units or something. It's it's really, it's not that simple of a calculation. So, you know, I think that's where, you know, when we spoke with two developers, they were saying that, you know. Thirty percent, if if that's what it was, they might just build buildings and then leave them vacant and maybe that's okay, but it's not really then vision that. You know, you'd build them and they just, it would sit. And so, uh. You know, if there was a, you know, we think the fifteen percent on the interior actually would might might get used and maybe it maybe it needs to. Um, maybe it's it should be a shell in some areas and so that there's still some mixed use happening. Um, in terms of other college towns, we're not actually saying this is a student housing district. We're allowing apartments or mixed use buildings. And so, you know, when this was discussed earlier, that, you know, the conversation was, well, let's just allow. Market rate development and see, you know, anyone could live there. And so what we've talked about is that, you know. A percentage of these buildings could be non students, right? It could be um, anyone who wants to live there. And so. If we wanted to say that this is just a student housing district, it would look a lot different, I think, in terms of the language. And so we're not saying that necessarily. And so I I think that that's the difference. Some places would say, yeah, let's make this a student housing overlay. And the only thing that's allowed is social dormitories. Right? No mixed use buildings, no apartments, it's only social dormitories. Let's make it six stories, absolutely no parking, and we're just going to make. You know, we're going to put thousands and thousands of beds there and we could do that, right? And that's what some communities have done. But that's not what we're saying, you know, so uh, I think that, um, you know, I had initially came out and said that last year, like, what if we made this a student housing overlay? And the discussion was saying, well, let's actually let it be, you know. Market development that can be for anyone and if students choose to live there, sure, but others won't. And so. You know, I spoke with Archipelago and they said, and you know, two of their downtown buildings. You know, probably a third of the of the residents are non students. And so, you know, they they say, they said it's easy that they can get that or more every time. It's it's just, you know. So although people could say, oh, it's always students, they say they have a pretty large percentage, non students. And, you know, that could happen down on University Drive. And so we're not restricting or excluding any potential tenants or residents.
All right. Um, next hand is from Jesse.
Thanks. Um, I guess I'm not really. Feeling the the argument. For eliminating the mixed use everywhere, meaning, okay, so developers saying. They'll just build it and leave it vacant. To me, that's better than not having the possibility. And I don't, from what we've seen in town, maybe vacant for some time, but long run, they're not going to leave it vacant. They're going to figure out a way to use it. And as Janet pointed out, I think once that goes, once that's not included, it's never coming back. And that's really what I'm thinking about is not the next two years when these things are built. But ten years, fifteen years, what do we, what kind of spaces do we want there? And and likewise logically, I feel like, are we really worried that if we require mixed use everywhere? Nobody's going to build anything. I don't think that's the reality, right? Because look what's happened over in town already. Developers are going to come do it. Whatever we put down, they're going to do it because it's still lucrative. And I agree, developers will figure out. What the market wants, how they're going to make money. And that's a very different agenda from, I think, what uh we are charged with. Right? We're charged with planning for the long term. Uh, which is a very different agenda from someone coming in to build this project. And so I would be in favor of uh encouraging more commercial or mixed use space.
All right, uh, Bruce.
Um. I'm in favor of of moving to resolution of this matter tonight. And uh, um, and I, we seem to be very close. We're we're arguing about specific, a few specific things. Uh, what that what I think would help here. If Nate has the text that he could put on the screen and we treat it like we do. Uh, uh, proposed conditions where we could go through these uh particular items. And discuss them uh and change or modify the language. Uh, and then have a document that we can uh. Uh, give the whatever instructions we need to give to 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 basically move to the next step here. Because what what's been happening and what will continue to happen if we don't break this cycle is that. We'll have a long discussion, just as we're having now, just as we've had three or five or six times before. Uh, there'll be a necessary break of four or five weeks between that and when we have it next time because of all the other business we have to do. And we'll have the same discussion again. Uh, it'll be slightly different, but it'll amount to the same thing and. And and we have to, I think, move to resolution of this tonight and recognize. That this is not going to be a perfect thing. We have to recognize that this is just. A a damn bylaw that can be changed as easily or more easily than it can be created. So if we see something, this is a big long strip of town. Uh, if we see a pattern emerging that we don't like, we we're not stuck with this damn thing. We can change it, we can modify it. So we should not. Uh, get our head stuck in the idea that we have to solve this problem for all time. We have to start. And we've got a pretty good starting point here. I'm with Jesse. I think there's a concern about. Um, apartment buildings. Um, I could say, well, let's see what happens. Um. I I'm with you, Doug. I think we have to trust that the uh, the development fraternity here. Are are uh, for the first time in quite a while in this town, certainly in the forty years I've been living here, we've got some actually the the. Downtown developers who are actually doing something rather than sitting on their backsides and doing nothing, which was nineteen eighties, nineteen nineties and. Early two thousand, so things have changed for the better, I think, in that regard. And I I I think we have to trust staff, you know, we we, these folks are uh employed to support us in this thing and 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 they've done a lot of research. Nate's particularly, and I think I might disagree with him or I might be surprised at some of the recommendations he's made, but I'm prepared to. To back the judgment now that we've been discussing this and he keeps uh, um, making arguments and so forth that that I find. Um, plausible and I'm prepared to support, even though they might not be exactly in alignment with my instincts. Uh, because as I said, we can change it. So I would suggest that Nate bring this up on the screen and we go through it and we try and. Uh, have create a document tonight that we can be satisfied with.
All right, thanks, Bruce. Um.
I've got a whole lot of other comments as well, but I prefer to make them in the document.
All right, well, I'll let you think about that, Nate. Um, I will say that if we're going to go through that process. Um, I I guess I'm imagining that for each of the changes, we would need to vote on it. We would need a clear record that, yes, in fact, a majority of the vote of the. Board wanted it one way or the other way. Is that what you're envisioning, Bruce?
No, I was imagining that we could come to some agreement that we wouldn't, uh, that was that that that. That we would vote on the whole document, but it might be that we need to take a straw poll poll as we move through, yes.
Yes, I, yeah, I mean, I've been taking notes, sorry, and I have like, I have fifteen. I started using numbers, Bruce. I have fifteen points um. From this discussion and so I could share the document, I mean, I I could go through it, but some of it is. You know, everything from, you know. Um, the shelves for the parking um conditions to, you know, a higher percent affordability. To the five hundred feet from the Amity Street intersection, maybe that's one place where we, you know, have a different, then it doesn't have to be five hundred feet across. You know, requiring mixed use buildings. Um, and so we we could go through the the um. You know, the the bylaw, the text now, uh, or we could keep having discussion and. You know, on the twenty six, would we bring it back? And so, you know, the idea would be, any changes would be track change at this point invisible. Uh, you know, it's up to the board members, I guess. I can do it live edit in a word document or, you know, there's, you know, a number of things that. You know, might be better, you know, spoken between staff, right? So then after this meeting, I could meet with Chris and Rob, Maura and others and say, okay, here's where we're going. You know, for instance, uh, you know, one of my questions after Janet was talking was like, you know, could we require? Like podium build even on apartments so that in the future, the first floor could be converted. I mean, and so instead of requiring mixed these buildings, could you require a construction method that would allow conversion? And so. I mean, those are the things that I wouldn't have answers to right now, but is that something we write into the bylaw? Even require a meeting with the planning board or their designees. Before submitting a site plan or view application and make that a condition of the bylaw. And so that an applicant has to come in. And so I I think there's probably a number of things that I would add or want to talk to staff about. And I think we could keep having this conversation. I feel like, you know, I might have thirty points after this that I'd want to then think about in terms of how it. Guess incorporate into the bylaw.
Well, Nate and Chris, um, you know, it's been my understanding that. We wanted to try to get to a vote of this before the current board goes off the board. And that would be Janet and me who are leaving. And so, uh. Is that in fact an objective or not?
It would be, I mean, I guess, you know.
All right, so so, you know, our next meeting is our last meeting. And we'll have a different board in July.
Or maybe not.
Do you want to try to get back to this next week, next Wednesday? On the twelfth?
Can I, can I?
Uh, oh, okay, I made my comment, um, and asked my question. We'll see what were they, where we end up. Janet, you're next.
So, so. We, you know, when we started, when Bruce was starting to do the consensus document. It was like, what do we agree on and build from that? And Nate, the last two times, it's like, instead of, you know, we have our, you did a good job of summarizing our concerns. And then you went off and. You know, at Doug's suggestion, wrote a document that didn't incorporate those concerns. And actually were more extreme in away from them. And so, I don't know, I I kind of, I mean, I don't want to spend the whole night. Discussing this, but you know, I I think we're not building a consensus document. We seem to be in this, like, and I said this last time, it's like. Who's the decider? Who's documented is this? Is this the planning board vision or is this the planning department? And so if you're going further and further away from what we're talking about each time. It it's not the consensus, it's just creating more division or just a different vision. And that's okay. You know, if I was going to revise this, I'd remove the apartment buildings. I would put a fifty percent requirement of mixed use in a mixed use building and the social dorms, I, you know, I'm fine with the dorms. I would remove the office park to protect the um. The um medical facilities because clearly they they would be like maybe the first to go, at least the, you know, and so. Um, and then, you know, I don't even think we need to let go of, we need to say anything about parking because our bylaw right now is so flexible. That basically it says, come to us and make your case, you know, and we'll we'll give it to you pretty much with very little documentation. And so, I mean, do, we could spend the whole night talking about this, but the vision. You know, I I, you know, I don't, and I would, you know, if we're going to do. No mixed use or allow apartments, I would increase the inclusionary zoning requirement because that's also the need. You know, we built hundreds and hundreds, we build over a thousand units in our town. We're in a building frenzy. And the prices of the rents have gone up all over in town because these are so expensive. And so. I'm sympathetic to what Fred is saying because you're like, this is a crisis. Um, it's not a crisis of a lack of housing, it's a crisis of the pricing of it. Um, and people wanting to live in Amherst. And so the university is not the escape valve. University Drive can be it, but let's make, and we know they'll build, we know they can afford to build mixed use downtown in the most awkward situation. They can afford to do it on University Drive. Why are we giving that away? And I'm not going to agree to give that away, so I could lose that vote, but if this is, you know. You know, we can talk about this all night, but if if you want to go back. And revise it, but not include what we're talking about and making it more extreme, that's not a great process. I would go back to Bruce's, like, building a consensus document. And that's a lot, but.
All right, um.
Yeah, I mean, I'd respond and say that if. The bylaw we had or Janet that you just mentioned, to me, would be a waste of time because it would never get used. And so I wouldn't want to go through months of that discussion and propose an overlay that then wouldn't be implemented. And so, you know, going through and saying, let's eliminate the office park, require fifty percent, don't allow this. You know, we've spoken with developers and different people and they said, you know, that wouldn't get used. And so I wouldn't want to go through the effort. Of really refining it and coming up with a document that then is not going to get used, right? And so. For from my perspective, the 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 point is actually housing production. So the problem is units, it's number of beds. And so if we really wanted to address this, I would actually say, make this a house, student housing overlay. Like I said, and do six stories and just only allow students. Right? Because then maybe the the RG and everywhere else in town would actually have. Less pressure in terms of the price and the conversion of of families, single family homes into student rentals. And so that is the market. It's not that there is a huge lack of demand in supply, a lack of supply. There's huge demand because there's no supply. Massachusetts has a half million unit shortage of housing. If we want to have people stay in the communities they've been living in, age in place, have new families and people come in. Have more school age children, it's all about supply. It's not about, oh, the prices are high, the prices are high because there's not enough supply. Uh, I mean.
And and it's expensive to build.
And it's expensive to build, but you know, they're, like you said, um, Bruce, we had, there was very little building for years. And so, you know. Unfortunately, it's been a reflexive thing. You mass expanded in the sixties and seventies, the town responded, we changed zoning, there wasn't a lot of building. We changed zoning, there was some building and now the reflexive nature is, oh, let's do something again. Uh, you know, there was a report commissioned in the nineteen nineteen ninety by the state. It was like, you know, affordability in college communities and it focused on Amherst in the region. And it's the same thing we're talking about now, you know, thirty years later, and most of it is about supply. And so. You know, so for my 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 thought would be if we had the document that was presented or discussed a few months ago. I would say, I I'm not really willing to move that forward because it's not going to get us housing units. Or what would actually make a difference in for for the for the housing market. And so, you know, the Housing Trust has been discussing this too, and they're saying, yeah, this is actually a great place, location. Let's try to actually. Do something different for the housing market so that other areas in town could have different opportunities and have housing opportunity here. And I feel like the document that we've been working on previously wouldn't get us either of those. And so I wouldn't actually continue to work on it. And so if we are saying, well, the document now is not workable for you. You know, for me, it is. And so I would say, well, let's see where we can get to actually have something get utilized to get more beds and units in town. Uh, and you know, interestingly enough, I do think we could increase inclusionary zoning and have more units down here, but I think having fifty percent mixed use everywhere and. Parking requirements and all those other things actually create a, an overlay that is not going to be used.
All right, thanks Nate. Um, Bruce, I guess you're next.
Um, I guess we should just remind ourselves that that consensus document that I wrote was a consensus of January. Uh, that's five months ago. I think things have changed. Certainly my mind has changed since it was in January. And uh, so uh, I I I, I'm with Nate. I think that it's not worth us pursuing something that. Uh, if we believe that it won't be used and I'm prepared to take the staff's uh guidance on this. And I'm certainly also prepared to trust that uh, not everything that all developers do is uh. Is um, eh, purely greedy. I think that these folks have a. Um. Have a business integrity and I think uh, um. If we, if we, if we create a situation that I. if we, if we, if we create a situation that I think Nate is working towards, then I, I want to see what happens. Um, I think that's reasonable. As I said, we can change it. So Nate, if you don't want to, you've got some reasons why you might want to go back to staff and, and redraft this, uh. But, um, uh, I think you're right. We should, we should make a decision if not tonight, then, then before the end of the month. And I think that Nate, from my point of view, um, uh, it's the vitality on University Drive that I want to preserve. And I see apartments, uh, getting in the way of that, uh, potentially. Uh, but of course, it's not that, that bylaw, that, that, that language that you last drafted is requiring apartments, it's simply allowing apartments. And as I said earlier, if it looks like we've got too many of them, we can do something about it. I probably would suggest that we change five hundred to a thousand feet and maybe from one or maybe both directions. And, uh, whatever, I, 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 my big, my big concern is that we want to, we want to, uh, maintain the business activity on that street. I think something that Doug said earlier suggests that when you start building a lot of houses there, there will become a force that suggests that that is uh, going to happen anyway. So I, I don't want us to try and uh, micromanage this thing. I think we have to have some trust. And Janet, I, 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 I think I'm speaking to you and you know that here because I think that that we, we have to, we have to have some faith here and, uh, and that the, the world won't, uh, uh, crash, uh, be a Guinness. I think, uh, I, I, I don't share your concerns that, uh, that what Nate has substantially, uh, uh, drafted is, is, is not in our best interest. I think it can be sharpened in the ways I've mentioned and the ways that Jesse's mentioned. And, um, but, uh, I'm substantially, um, good with what we've got. And, uh, and I probably could, I could support a process where tonight we went through it, but I didn't know that everybody else has got that stamina and, uh, and Nate seems to have other conversations he wants. So I'll, I'll withdraw that suggestion and hope that we can do it. Uh, and come prepared to do it next time we meet on this. Because I wanted to move forward.
Alright, thanks Bruce. Um, alright, so there's three hands up and Jesse and Janet, you guys have talked a couple of times, so I'm going to let Karen go next.
Yeah, briefly, I do want, uh, Nate, you suggested that we maybe have a bylaw that, uh, asks developers to meet with us before the site plan review. I think that's great. I saw what a difference it made on Sunset Avenue. I think Barry Roberts was grateful to have all our input and it certainly changed the product. So, uh, I would encourage you to put that in. And otherwise, I, I agree with Bruce. I would like this to come to, uh, a vote, uh, pretty soon. And, um, and I'm also being persuaded that we need to go into this direction to preserve the rest of the, the, um, the, the town. And we are in a kind of a crisis. But I also met with Mindy Dome uh, at her open meeting at the Jones Library, which is at the end of every month. And she said this bonding bill, which is in front of the, um, the, um, state government right now concentrates on housing. It's going to go on through, go through very quickly. And one of the biggest concerns that they have is providing uh, housing for workers and staff. She, she wanted me to just kind of back off on that. Uh, I kept pushing that we need to have affordable housing for students. And she said, it's not just students. It's the staff, faculty, all these things. And that's what they're really pushing for. So there'll probably be something coming from the government to support uh, incentives to build that kind of housing.
Okay, thank, thank you, Karen. Alright, Janet, and you've got your hand up. Jesse took his down.
I wonder if, um, maybe Nate and the Housing Subcommittee could work on, you know, an, another draft and come back in two weeks or so. Two weeks or three weeks, I can't remember. Um, you know, with something to sort of hash it out because um, I also wonder if there's any public comment. I've been wondering about that myself, but, you know, I, I think that I don't, you know, we know, we know you can build mixed use buildings in downtown Amherst that have, you know, thirty percent, you know, of, you know, commercial space or retail space. For years, there was the claim that they couldn't do ten percent, um, inclusionary zoning. And no one documented anything with numbers. And even, you know, people on the zoning Subcommittee got tired of that. And we pushed that through and we, voila, we have mixed use buildings downtown, you know, with unlimited, you know, amount of units, no parking. And we have a ten percent afford or ten or twelve percent. And so I, if you can do it downtown, why can't we do it on University Drive? Even if you gave them a sixth floor, get something in return, you know, like, we're giving people an economic incentive. Barry Roberts is building a four-story building, I think, or five stories that does this in the same place. And so I think it's an act of faith that we have a lucrative market. We have a slightly rising population. We don't have a half million people like Boston does. Um, and we have housing pressures on us. And it's, it's an act of faith that we build, we put in some good zoning, require some good, good looking buildings that do something for the community that it will get built. It's getting built now. I have no idea why they wouldn't build it on the University Drive.
Alright, thanks Janet. Um, so Nate, uh, and Chris, uh, do you, are you guys, do you guys want to take this back and tweak it a bit more and come back on the twenty-sixth? I'm, I'm seeing Chris shake her head. Yes.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think, I, I wouldn't mind going through like the twenty points I have, um, you know, and just seeing where we are. So, you know, if we go in reverse order, you know, we could talk about the inclusionary, um, percentage. And so, yeah, I mean, I, I would be willing to say, let's have a six-story. Maybe step back some distance. We don't even say step back if uh, in, in addition to the twelve percent, they have eight percent units go up to a hundred and fifty AMI. And so then all of a sudden you have, you know, a missing middle component and you're at twenty percent of, of units that are, um, non-students. And, you know, the eight percent becomes a local thing we have to work with. A hundred and fifty AMI is published by HUD. Anyway, staff's talked about this. It was kind of like, oh, uh, um, you know, I've, I've talked about this, having this actually increasing our inclusionary zoning across town with something like this to get at housing that's more than eighty percent. And so what staff has found is that eighty percent actually is too expensive for a lot of people. And ideally, we'd have, you know, units that, uh, match the voucher payment standards, which is, you know, whatever, seventy, seventy-two percent or something. But, you know, eighty percent is one of those, it's a definition. It's in the state. So for affordable units, we have it be eighty percent or below. But, you know, everyone just goes to eighty and then they have a hard time filling units, but they can voluntarily lower it. Developers don't like doing that. But anyways, yeah, I mean, I, so some of these things that I, we could talk about tonight or Chris and I could go back and talk to different staff about. Um, you know, I'd kind of be curious to see where the planning board is, is with that. Um, this section of University Drive is twenty-six hundred, uh, linear feet. So right now, five hundred feet, we're left with a, like sixteen hundred, you know, feet of road, you know, if we did seven hundred and fifty feet from each intersection, you know, that gets us, you know, north of CVS and, um, below like the ATM building, right? And so then you're left with, um, you know, a thousand linear feet where you could have something else other than mixed use built, you know, you could have apartments or social dormitories. So that means, you know, fifteen hundred feet of the twenty-six hundred feet can only be mixed use buildings. And then there's a thousand feet in the middle that could also be social dormitories or apartments. And given the buildings that are there and weather constraints, you know, looking online, that's maybe three, maybe four sites to be developed. And so you'd have all of University Drive and you'd have maybe four non-mixed use buildings. And so, you know, I mean, is that something, you know, for instance, like, is that, I, I don't mind talking about it more tonight if that, you know, will give us direction, staff direction, uh, moving forward.
Alright, um. Well, if anybody wants to comment on Nate's, uh, sort of what Nate, uh, raised as a possibility, let's first talk, uh, uh, adding a sixth story in, um, in return for adding some, uh, some affordable units that are defined above the AMI sort of for the missing middle. How do people feel about that? I'm seeing two thumbs up. Fred is not, uh, I'm, I'm going to say I'm, I'm not in favor of that. Uh, I guess I've figured out my limit on height was five stories. Um, you know, um, so I, I, I'd prefer not to have six-story buildings. That to me is just a little bit beyond the kind of human scale that I'm comfortable with. Um, and, uh, so that's, that's my reaction to it.
We're quite a really low ceilings dog in these buildings though.
Yeah, yeah.
Still maybe like.
Keep them under sixty feet, uh, so you won't get much of a commercial level. Um, so did anybody want to put else want to put their thumb up or down? Um, Karen or Janet or Fred? Uh, Fred's a down. Um, and I guess Karen and Janet are not going to comment on that. Um, I, I see everybody's hand. I know there's a bunch of hands up. Um, you know, I'm, I guess I'm trying to do this sort of quickly. Uh, maybe that's a mistake. Um, and, and the other thing Nate was your expansion of the mixed use only zone closer into the middle, going from five hundred to seven fifty. How do people feel about that? Jesse's got a thumbs up. Bruce doesn't know. Fred's against it. Um, Karen's in favor. Janet doesn't know. I'm kind of wishy-washy myself, so.
You know, Doug, I have questions. You know.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure. Um, what, what? Uh, uh, okay, um. So you got a little bit of response there, Nate, and now we'll go back to some more comments. So Janet, you are number four. Jess, Jesse, go ahead.
Thank you. Just quickly, I completely agree with two versus sentiments. One, that we should move this along. Two, that it's not fixed in stone, that we can always revisit. But with that in mind, the logic to me is backward. Like, why wouldn't we try for what we think is a good solution? I'm thinking of the mixed use. And if we put that as a requirement, and then in six months, we have zero proposals. We could say, oh, it was absolutely correct. Nobody wants to use this by law. Then we could relax it. Versus the other way, where then we have every lot proposed without any commercial use. And then what do we do? Do we then start picking and choosing? And saying, well, this one's okay because it was in first. And then the next three, we have to change the bylaw. So I just wanted to make that maybe reversal of process.
Okay. Alright, thanks Jesse. Bruce?
I say, I just, I'm sorry, one.
Okay, Nate.
Was moving around on me. Um, so if we require mixed use buildings, um, would we, could we require with say, a varying percentage, um, say after five hundred feet or some distance? So you know, instead of thirty percent, maybe it's less, but we have, we would require, I mean, then, then only the overlay really is, it's only mixed use buildings. Say along the street, maybe the, maybe a secondary building behind it wouldn't be. Uh, but we'd have, require some mixed use percentage on the street facing, uh, buildings.
I'm seeing a number of heads nodding yes on that, including one thumbs up. So that's, that's something to think about, Nate. Uh, now Bruce.
Oh, dear, yes, okay.
If you remember.
I think I do. Uh, one of the reasons, uh, Janet's right, this was hard to, to definitively. Uh, one of the reasons that I supported more stories was I remembered the, uh, reason why Barry Roberts wanted his variance. And that was because of the particularly lousy foundation down there. And he was looking for higher, uh, more floors would give him, uh, he could, he, he could spread that, uh, foundation premium over more floors. So the argument could be made that this is a site where height is, geotechnical situations drive higher buildings. And, and I, and I was putting my thumbs up for that because I really wanted, uh, Nate to figure out whether that's true. Uh, I think my reminder, you might have talked to some developers about that, but if that was true, if that's a particular circumstance of this site or this area, then we probably should know about it. Then it wouldn't be unreasonable for us to adjust our, our, um, our overlay accordingly. So that was that one. Secondly, uh, the question related to uh, apartment buildings, uh, being denied, uh, within certain distances from the intersections at either end. Uh, that's one mechanism. I, I had another mechanism in mind, which I, uh, was wondering whether would be more suitable. Uh, and that is minimum spacing kind of mechanism. Uh, and the reason for that is because it, it seems to me that the, the mechanism of, of having, uh, um, basically, uh, um, allowing apartment buildings in the center part of the thing, but not at either end, uh, notionally might, uh, mean that the center part of the, 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 uh, drive, uh, University Drive would be a less vital place because there would be less retail activity in the storefront. My general sense is that if we could, uh, uh, drive, uh, some kind of retail activity or some kind of commercial activity at the, at this, at the, uh, at the street front all the way along, it would be good. That would be the goal. And I, uh, I, I don't see why we shouldn't, as Jesse said, try for that as being what we really would like to do. And, uh, figure out a way in which the, that, 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 that we can imagine that this would be an attractive, uh, make it attractive to developers. I'm, I'm respectful of your knowledge of having talked to developers and getting a sense of what, what is possible. And I don't want us to be dreaming about what would be nice, but what wouldn't, uh, be driven. I also know that many years ago, I created the co-housing community here in North Amherst, when the whole of the development world thought I was crazy. And then, uh, about three or four years afterwards, the same people were coming from all over the country to see these places because they were, um, they were what Amherst suddenly became proud of. So I, I, so I'm, I'm ACDC on this. But I'm, I'm, I'm trusting your, your, your instincts, but, 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 but don't, don't let us down. Um, and, uh, uh, that's it for now. I can't think of the other three things I was going to say.
Okay. Uh, Fred?
Um, yeah, I, uh, I, I'm very much impressed by the argument that, uh, you know, that, uh, we can't go through all of this process and end up with something that's not used. Um, what I wanted to talk about was the distance at each end and I think rather than just throw out numbers of either five hundred feet or seven hundred and fifty feet or something, I would say, uh, simply no more than what is already developed, whatever that distance is. Uh, don't extend it further and then, and you know, get a measurement on that and use that as the parameter. Uh, and then let's, uh, let's take some economic pressure off of the uh, other neighborhoods in the town. And that means, uh, moving forward with this. Thank you.
So you would, uh, not allow apartments within the zone that is already commercial? So that the mixed use stays is, is exclusively within the commercial zone, but then apartments are allowed where there isn't commercial now?
Yeah, uh, basically, let's take as much pressure off the rest of the town as we can.
Okay. Alright, and Janet, we're back to you.
So, speaking to them, I think the, most of the members of the Housing Subcommittee would, is this something that you would like to hash out with Nate? Like me and hash this out? Because I think this could go on for like till two in the morning or ten thirty, which is also way past my bedtime. Um, I also wonder if you could, if anyone wants to have public comment, because we might be just losing our, you know, whoever's left. So I just, I just, you know, do we want to just keep talking for hours or do, can we just put this into a forum where we could have more detailed conversation and kind of hash things out? Or do we want to stay here? Because, you know, part of it, it's like, you know, Nate, when you were talking with only three or four apartment buildings, you know, with your distancing, I was like, is that on both sides of the street? You know, like a question like that, it, you know, I don't know that, you know, that would be a question that could be discussed a little bit or, you know, in a, in the Housing Subcommittee. As people kind of go through language and stuff, but does the Housing Subcommittee want to do this with Nate? Or am I just insane? And then could we have public comment?
Uh, Jesse?
Uh, I think certainly we could. Uh, I certainly would not be opposed to that. Um, I'm not sure it would be a more efficient process than here. Maybe it would be, but might not be.
Well, I'll say.
I was gonna say that, um, you know, Chris actually suggested an additional meeting, which maybe that could be the case if we wanted to get to a vote by the end of June. I mean, honestly, from the comments, I've, um, I'm at about twenty points from this meeting. Um, you know, my thought would be if the board really wants to see mixed use to have, keep the five hundred feet from the intersections. And then, uh, e- everywhere else require mixed-use buildings along the street at, you know, fifteen or twenty percent. And that back buildings don't have to be. And honestly, nothing, nothing else would really change with the overlay. We're still allowing apartments in sororities or for social dormitories, as long as they're not street-facing. Any street-facing building has to have a certain percentage of mixed use. Um, I mean, that's kind of where I'm leaning.
Yeah.
You know, I think that resolves a lot of the conversation, um, tonight. You know, I hear that six stories is too high. For building code, honestly.
From one member.
No, but I, so Bruce said something about like building and code and everything. Really, it's at seven stories is where building code and everything else starts to become efficient. And that, to me, that's too high. So if five floors is what we want, it, it doesn't, six stories isn't going to help a developer out any more than five is, in terms of efficiencies and say, of building or other things. And so, I mean, they'll have more units, but, um, so, I mean, I'm kind of leaning towards what I suggested. I think that would, uh,
Yep.
Get a lot, I think I would, I would try to see if we can say shell for the Western Access Drive, you know, it's a requirement that it be used. Uh, the parking, I'd look at in terms of can we require that stuff? Um, a meeting before the planning board or, or a planning designee or planning board designees before application. And, um, h- honestly, I feel like that addresses a lot of the, the concerns. So those are the three or four changes.
So do we, do we want it? Chris, wasn't there a reason we didn't have a meeting on the nineteenth? Was that because it was Juneteenth?
Yes.
Yes, but there is also, um, June twelfth, which is a Wednesday.
Oh, that's next week, right?
You could do the, do a, another meeting next week and focus only on this topic.
All right. Well, I can't be sure that I would be here on the twelfth. But maybe I'm the only one. Um, Jesse?
Chris, uh, we had planned to have a subcommittee meeting on the twelfth anyway, which is four of us, so that could work fine, I think.
You have your meetings in the evening?
Yep.
So you could have your meeting on the twelfth and then whoever else could join, um, could join. Is that, is that reasonable?
Sounds like a plan.
How do you, how do you feel about meeting with this housing subcommittee?
How, how do I feel?
Yeah, are you fine? You know, are you good with that? I mean, you sounded like you wanted to talk to Rob and, and maybe Chris some more. I don't know.
Yeah, we'll talk by Wednesday.
Yeah.
And then, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I attended the last meeting. I figured I'd attend this one if, you know, and if some of it is getting some of those details worked out, and then bringing something back to the planning board on the twenty-sixth, then I would feel, you know, good about that, that, you know, we're trying to get, you know, my thought too would be that, that's what would happen on the twenty-sixth is the planning board would recommend this, and then it would still get reviewed and referred back to the planning board.
Right.
So there would still be months of conversation, but at least it would get it to the point where, you know, it's been, um, it started an official process. You know, right now, we're calling it a zoning amendment. Really, it's just a, you know, a concept for a zoning amendment that if the board sponsors it, then it can move forward. Otherwa- you know, otherwise it's, right now, it's really, you know, it's just kind of a, a planning concept.
Right. Um, and who is on the housing subcommittee? I can't remember. Uh, Jesse, Bruce, Karen and Janet. Okay. All right.
I'm not, I'm not on the committee.
Next Wednesday.
So Karen, Karen could not make it. Okay.
Fred, Fred is.
Oh, okay.
It'll be Bruce, Fred and I.
Okay. And maybe Bruce.
Yes, I'm on, uh, I'm on that, but, but Janet's a, Janet can attend, you know, either as an invitee or as a m- member of the public that's, uh, that she did before. So it's kind of pretty open, I think.
Yep. Okay. Janet, I see your hand.
I had an idea that maybe if, you know, having Rob Moore come might be helpful and maybe making the meeting a little earlier, so staff doesn't have to stay late. So, because Rob is a, just has a ton of info.
Okay. Well, food for thought, Nate. All right, um, so maybe that's where we leave it at the moment. Um, okay, Jesse?
One more question for, I guess really for Nate. Are you willing to do that? And what time will be best for you? Because it feels like if we're gonna try and address this, it'd be great if you could be there. But I don't, you know, don't want to put more pressure on you to.
I mean, honestly, it doesn't really matter if it's, you know, uh, you know, if it's at five or six, I'm still, it's in the evening. It doesn't benefit me either way, right? So either it would have to be at like, you know, four or three or like ten at night. So, um, I don't, it doesn't bother me, you know, you know. If we, if we're sticking at six or six-thirty, we could just stick with that. I don't, you know, unless for some reason some subcommittee members can't make it at that time. But otherwise, we can just keep it at the regular time.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, um, so I guess we'll leave it there. I guess I will ask, are there any members? There's four members of the public who are still here. Uh, did any of you want to make a public comment before we close the conversation this evening? Uh, I am not seeing any hands raised, so maybe that's. Oh, okay, here's Janet Keller. Pam, if you can bring her over.
Hi Janet, you would need to unmute yourself.
Janet, you need to unmute? There you go.
Thank you. Um, I, I'm overwhelmed. Um, to be perfectly honest, um, I would like to put in a passionate uh, request, um, that you, um, address the wetlands, um, issues which to me are really, really big. Um, and we've seen how, um, a v- very talented lawyer can, um, work with those, um. Uh, it, uh, so if there's a way to address that at all in the zoning, um, I think that's critically important rather than leading it, uh, to case by case, uh, especially since we've seen, um, the flooding. Um, I think the mixed use, um, is really important and, um, hope, uh, that you, um, uh, protect it. And six stories is too high and parking is critical. Um, those are a few things that come to mind, but, um, frankly, um, the pace and, um, the scope of this discussion, um, which I think the public was not expecting to happen. So I guess I would, um, ask um, that you well advertise this so that people can, um, weigh in. Um, and, um, I appreciate the liveliness and thoughtfulness of, of all who have worked on this and spoken tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Janet. Um, as for the publicity, I will say that as, as Nate mentioned, uh, this is really just the start of a process. It would go to town council, probably be referred to CRC, uh, back to town council, then to the planning board for public hearings, and ultimately back to town council. So, uh, it's quite likely that anybody that wants to pay attention to it, if they haven't heard about it yet, will hear about it before it gets too far along. Um, Janet?
Did, I don't, did a press release go out and everybody ignored it? Or like they found it so interesting? Didn't, because that was what we were talking about last time, I think.
Can I say something? I think we've been, um, overwhelmed with the amount of work that we have to do here in the planning department, and we probably forgot about a press release, um, to be quite frank. It's just, we feel like we're under the ocean, like we're at Jones Beach and the waves are pounding us. That's what we feel like.
That is a vivid image that describes a lot of my childhood. Getting hit by Jones Beach waves, so.
Okay, all right. So we, it's, the time is nine thirty-two and we will close that conversation. Now we'll go on to our other regularly scheduled events here.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to mention the, the, um, wetlands and stormwater. You know, the town, there is, I don't want to say it's new, but you know, kind of newer permitting and stormwater review for projects in Amherst and, you know, uh, University Drive has a number of wetland resource areas. And so I, you know, that'll be looked at very carefully by the Conservation Commission and, uh, Public Works. And so,
Mm-hmm.
you know, even the variance that was granted by the ZBA, that's lost to get before the planning board and the Conservation Commission. And so the Conservation Commission still has a really thorough review to do of that project in terms of stormwater management, any mitigation or anything else. And so I, that's any project on University Drive. I think that, uh, any development here, redevelopment will actually be expensive for a developer because they'll have to figure out how to manage stormwater, right? It can't be a net increase from what's there. And so oftentimes that requires, um, a lot of work and engineering. And so I don't, I, you know, in terms of what we write into the zoning overlay, you know, I'm not going to write into, you know, we could make a generic reference to that. I'm not going to have any requirements because there are so many other requirements that have to happen for stormwater. And so, you know, I, we could have a nod to it, but I'm not going to say it has to meet a certain permit or standard because those could change and then the bylaws outdated, but, um, you know, we can talk about that at the housing subcommittee, I guess, if we want some kind of reference there, but there's pretty, there's a lot of safeguards in place.
Yes. We do have a capable conservation commission. Okay, um, Pam, I think we could move Janet back to the attendees.
Yes.
And, uh, okay, so we'll go on. The time is nine thirty-four and old business. Chris, anything that we did not anticipate? How about?
No old business, no new business.
No new business. All right, I did, I think I did see some A and R subdivisions.
Can we excuse Karen? It's three thirty where she is.
Oh, yeah.
Karen, you, you are certainly able, able to depart if you'd like.
Thank you, and no news from the design review.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, all right, A and Rs.
Yeah.
Pam, do you want to explain these or?
Um, I'm gonna let you do the talking, Chris. I don't have much voice left at this point. Let me just see if I can find the, um, the documents. That would be the best thing.
All right, one of the A and Rs, I'll just start talking and then Pam can find the documents. One of the A and Rs is on a little street called Webster Street. And, um, it really involves a pr- a property that is at the corner of Main Street and Webster Street. And it's a property that's for sale right now. Um, but as, as, uh, as they're thinking about what to do with the property, um, they are planning to carve off a little piece of the, I guess this is the southwest corner of the property, and, um, sell it to this, um, building that's marked eighteen Webster Street. And so it's a little kind of a pork chop shaped, um, or lollipop shaped property that is being carved off thirty-nine sixty-nine square feet. And it would be added to the, um, property that is currently occupied by this dwelling unit, number eighteen. And there's no, um, reason to think that this needs to go through the uh, subdivision, uh, process. So what you were, would be doing is saying that, um, this is not, this does not be, uh, I can't talk anymore. This does not require subdivision approval. It is mainly, it is purely an A and R approval not required. So, um, you would authorize Doug Marshall to make the, uh, endorsement on the plan that subdivision approval is not required.
Uh, Janet?
I might be just tired, but so this new, this new lot with the building is, it's gonna be conforming. It's, we're not creating a non-conforming situation?
It is non-conforming, but it's less non-conforming than it was previously. And I've asked the building commissioner if that's an issue to be concerned about, and he says, he said no.
Okay, could, could Pam just like take her little cursor and show me the original lot? Because I'm just a little lost.
Yeah, it's labeled old lot line. That's the original lot.
It's that tiny thing. Okay, thank you. That's it.
All right. Anybody object to my agreeing this is not require subdivision? I'm not seeing any hands. All right, Pam, why don't we go to the next one?
Okay, the next one is, um, one that you're familiar with. Uh, forty-five and fifty-five South Pleasant Street. So you knew when you approved the site plan review, um, for this process, of this pro- property, um, and this project that Barry Roberts is building. Um, it's the old Hastings building, and then it's the property that used to contain the little brown building, which was the Red Door Salon. So the idea here is to, um, combine those two lots. So there's one lot that can be developed with the, um, project that you all approved a few couple of months ago. Um, so this does not require subdivision approval, in my opinion. And so I'm asking you to, um, confirm that you agree with that and that you authorized Doug Marshall to sign the plan.
Any objections? Not seeing any hands.
Okay, good.
All right. Next item. Uh, ZBA applications, any upcoming that we should know about?
Um, I, I didn't get to that today. I started work at seven AM and didn't get to it. So if Chris and Nate want to, um, highlight anything that we haven't already shared?
Okay. All right.
I can't think of anything.
Not seeing anything from them. Uh, upcoming SPP, SPR, SUB applications, anything?
Actually, go back to the ZBA. Did I tell you about the Black Walnut Inn? The Black Walnut Inn in North Amherst.
No.
Um, it's changing hands, and so there are some, uh, changes that need to occur. They need to submit a new, um, site plan. That's for ZBA. And, um, I think there may be a condition or two that needs to be changed. So that's something that is go- going to come before the CBA. Now back to planning board for site plan review. We have the application for Barry Roberts' new project at the corner of Amity Street and University Drive. I have it in my office. Um, we haven't thoroughly scrutinized it yet. Um, and when we do, we'll set a public hearing date, and that would probably be at least in July. My guess is it would be towards the later part of July, if not later than that. Um, and I can't think of anything else, although we're constantly talking to developers and things are coming, coming in the door. But I don't think we have anything else solid.
All right. Okay, planning board committee and liaison reports. Bruce, anything on PVPC?
Nothing to report.
All right, uh, for CPAC, I can tell you that, um, I think it's, uh, council that has asked that CPAC reconsider or amend its approval of some money for the, the track at the high school, uh, which, uh, in the original approval was limited to an artificial turf. Uh, or, you know, an artificial surface, um, and, um, not, not for the track, but for the field. And so we're being asked to consider releasing that requirement to allow a natural uh, turf field. And that, we meet on that tomorrow if anybody wants to spend another night in front of Zoom. Um, so that's my report. Uh, we heard from DRB or from Karen. She didn't have anything. Um, Chris, anything on CRC?
Yes, the CRC is still working on the, um, solar bylaw. I think they're probably not going to get back to it. Well, when are they getting back to it? This coming Tuesday, I think.
Okay.
11th, I believe that's right.
All right. All right. And then Report of Chair, I don't really have anything to report. Chris, anything on staff other than that you're overloaded and you're tired?
Nothing except that Jacinta and Nate put out two grant applications today, working together. Nate had done a lot of the upfront work ahead of time, but I was pretty amazed to see them putting out two grant applications. And then Nate was able to present his zoning amendment tonight. So Nate has worked overtime and more today.
Okay. Bruce, I see your hand.
Yes, we seem to zoom over. I guess would it be, I had, I had new business or unanticipated stuff. I had a question that occurred to me as I was driving through town a couple of times today. And it has to do with the Jersey barriers that are basically creating restaurant space for some of the restaurants around Antonio's and so forth. And I, I couldn't help noticing that the similar enclosures that work for the, the, the restaurant on, just near Hastings and also Amherst Coffee around the corner, where the, the enclosures are much nicer and far, far, far more agreeable. I was, the question is, were those Jersey barriers just put up during COVID in a kind of a perfunctory way? Or did they come before this board and did we approve all of that sort of stuff? And the question, if the answer is that we did, then the question would be, why, what was the process that got us the kind of enclosures between the, the, the places on Pleasant Street and outside Amherst Coffee versus the, the Jersey barriers in front of Antonio's?
Chris?
So the Jersey barriers were a joint effort of the DPW and the Building Commissioner to demarcate places for outdoor dining. When, we did apply for a grant for those nicer installations, the one near Hastings and the one in front of Amherst Coffee. And we asked restaurants if they wanted those. And those two restaurants said yes, so they got them. Other restaurants were not inclined to have them. And there were also problems with, I think, slope of the street in some locations. So they wouldn't have worked in some locations. But the people who wanted them got them and they are brought out by the DPW in the spring and put away in the fall. And as are the Jersey barriers. And the Planning Board did not approve any of that because it's all within the town right of way. So the Planning Board actually doesn't have jurisdiction over it. I believe that the Design Review Board might have reviewed the platforms, the nicer platforms, but I'm not sure about that.
Okay. Thank you for that. I'll, I'll see if I can raise some other questions more useful later on.
You mean at a later meeting?
I was thinking about midnight, but.
All right. Well, I'll make you the host in just a few minutes, Bruce. All right. So Chris, was, did you have any report of staff?
Just to thank Nate for his hard work today with those grant applications.
All right. All right. So the time on my computer is 9:45. I think we are able to adjourn.
Sorry, so quick, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a quick plug on June 10th. There is a, a meeting to look at the VFW site for shelter and housing. And so it's an in-person meeting. We have the Narrow Gate Architects are going to be there helping facilitate and staff. And so there'll be, you know, different opportunities for input on the design of the site, of the building, on services. And so it's a, you know, the town's hired Narrow Gate to have a, you know, a three or four month process to help get a conceptual idea and programming ideas for that VFW site. So on Monday, there'll be a, a meeting and there'll be some subsequent meetings, but this will be the first public meeting on this process.
And it's in person in Town Hall.
Okay. All right. Thank you all. See you on the 26th.
Good night. Thank you.
Bye.